Sure, my phone's on. We'll go ahead and call O S H Commissioner's meeting Monday, June 12th meeting. Sorry, 19th meeting. Go back in time if you do that. Or pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds. All right, good morning, folks. Is anybody here for public comment? Everybody's on the agenda. Do we have? Any additions, deletions?
The only thing I was on the executive session that I had on there, I wasn't exactly sure what to call it. And I did talk to Josh and he just said, put it as attorney client. And we can just call him.
Okay.
I'm not on the agenda, but I wanted to discuss a possibility of an additional benefit to the employees that is free from my contract.
We can put you under staff report?
Yeah, it would be wonderful, thank you. I just got that information this last week, so.
Okay. Jay, anything?
There is somebody that was on there. There were public comments around the night, they just sent a text. They sent a letter and I said, I'm not going to read that letter because it's not signed.
We'll just reopen public comment.
They're pulling them right now.
Oh, they are, okay. Yep. Melinda, did you have any revisions to the agenda? Nothing, okay. Go ahead and motion to approve the agenda with the changes. Motion's been made second and all in favor. I opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll give them a second to come on in here. Morning Christine. Said, good morning Christine. We could use this time to review the minutes too, as long as you have any.
Can I get one down?
No, we already made the motion to approve it. You don't, what do you got?
I know Heather has the same problem. Heather, is your one of your executive sections recovered from the most?
Yes, because the same person that called me said she called me.
So if we went, we go down there, so if you want to add that topic, we can do that openly. Because that mustn't be due on exact, I'll say exactly what's going on up there.
Well, there was a couple of things I visited with Russ Uy and Josh about that we might want to start in there and then.
That's not what this one's all about.
It is, it's the same thing, it's just I reached out to both of them and there was just a little bit of information I gathered from them and so.
So I don't need to add anything? We've already got it?
That's what that is, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
So then the rest of the comments.
But then we can come out and.
Yes, yeah, we don't need to add that, we've got commissioner reports, we've got what's in. Are you the public comment we're waiting on? All right, you have the floor.
I just have a letter I wrote that I want to read.
Do we have a sign in sheet? I think we forgot that the last couple of times. A sign in sheet for when people come in? Yeah, we can just use it. Sorry, Susan. If you'd start the process and then we'll.
So over the last year, I started watching the online O S H County Board of County Commissioners B O C C meetings. As a working citizen, I'm not able to come to all of the daytime meetings, but as I have grown increasingly concerned and have made it a priority to attend as many as possible. I wish meetings were held at a time that is more convenient for citizens to attend, but I also understand that there is not a time that would work for everyone in the county. I do appreciate having the ability to view the video footage for the weekly meetings and special sessions. I have learned many things about our county through these meetings that I did not know before, which is a good thing. As a citizen, I think sometimes we forget that there are so many departments and moving pieces to county government. A couple of years ago, the courthouse to me was just a place I went to pay my tags and taxes. I haven't needed to visit with the county attorney or the register of deeds or speak with land development. It has been an eye opener to me to realize the scope and functions of each of these departments. While I appreciate gaining this knowledge, it has also given me the opportunity to observe some things that increasingly concern me as a taxpayer. As mentioned before, I have always gone to the courthouse to pay my county property taxes and my vehicles' tags and taxes. I have done this for over 15 years. I am stuck in the old ways of doing things and I like the physical receipt or tag in hand to make sure that everything is taken care of. I couldn't do this as I normally do in 2020 and 21, but I do understand why. Why I haven't been able to do so in 2022 and 2023 is baffling to me. When I get frustrated and ask why, I'm told COVID messed everything up. Prior to 2020, I never had an issue getting in and out of the treasurer's office to pay my tags and vehicle taxes. When COVID fully hit, I understand that this office was under a different elected treasurer. And I fully understand that COVID wreaked havoc on everything in society. It took most businesses at least a year after lockdown started to be being lifted to find any sense of normalcy again. But in 2021, I still had no zero issues renewing my tags and paying my taxes. By the time the current treasurer was elected in office in 2022, the business world was very much back on track, even if it was an altered one. This includes the O S H County Treasurer's Office. I came before you several months ago with concerns of how business was being handled at the treasurer's office. I ask of you county commissioners to research your minutes. Have you ever received this amount of complaints about the previous treasurer's office than you have over this current treasurer's term? Our current treasurer Foster has spoken ill of the previous treasurer's office on both social media and in public forum in these meetings, but has yet to rectify any of the wrongs she is so quick to point out about the previous office. My concern is that the current treasurer's office is decidedly not back on track, nor are there any tracks in sight. Last fall and over a period of three months, I attempted to call the treasurer's office repeatedly. I did not keep track of how many voicemails I left requesting to be called back, but I never received a single phone call back. Over the last six months, I have gone into the treasurer's office three times. Much of the staff appear to be new each time I go in. And quite frankly, they seem unaware of how to properly perform their primary jobs and wait times what there are unacceptable. This is concerning. Things seem to be getting worse, not better. During the same period, I've heard the same complaints and experiences that I've had being voiced to the B O C C repeatedly by other citizens. Interestingly, I noticed that these meetings, there seems to be a mounting defense of the treasurer's office as opposed to solutions or expectations placed to make the office better. When I considered this, I thought perhaps my own experience has jaded my perception this was happening. I consciously adjusted my attitude towards the office to more neutrally observe how the B O C C responded to all departments. After extensively reviewing B O C C footage, there is now zero question to whenever the treasurer's office is mentioned to having issues. Commissioner Cooter instantly becomes defensive. I have watched many of the meetings several times during these interactions to make sure that I am not perceiving things that are not there. I have seen Cooter not only question other departments and demand instant answers when she thinks the department has made a mistake, but outright rebuke them and previous elected officials. This is not the same treatment that Commissioner Cooter gives the treasurer's office and/or current treasurer when an issue is brought up for discussing. I'm not sure what the correlation is between Commissioner Cooter and County Treasurer Christine Foster, but any other department should be so lucky to have a commissioner go to bat for them in such fashion. I have to wonder where this defense of the treasurer's office was when the previous treasurer was still in office. This is why I feel there must be some kind of connection between these two women, because in my opinion, the last treasurer was treated terribly by Commissioner Cooter. I direct my current concerns back to the top treasurer's office. As I stated several months ago, and for whatever reason, the current treasurer has decided that her office will no longer offer the ability to renew driver's license. I am beyond annoyed that I must travel outside of my county to do this. Previously, I have always renewed my license here in O S H County. So imagine my irritation when I then hear treasurer Foster requesting in a B O C C meeting that she wants $30,000 bonuses for her office. A bonus for offering less services to taxpayers of our county or for not having employees that know how to competently do their jobs or receiving a record number of complaints or moreover, for not seemingly being able to keep any employees since the turnover rate seems to be the driving factor in all these issues. This is preposterous. It infuriates me that we are paying more money for less service. Commissioner Cooter seemingly defending and protecting the treasurer offices that is now under Foster's direction from every issue and complaint means that the court directions to fix that office will not be addressed and is concerning. She is entertaining and voting yes to raises and bonuses for this office while she is actively voting no and questioning raises for other departments and offices during B O C C meetings. The treasurer office is an elected office and being a county commissioner is an elected position. It is not a buddy system. If the citizens of this county are having multiple issues, concerns and frustration, the people in these positions should be working to fix and address what is broken, not defending what is not working with excuses. Thank you for your time in reading my concerns. I made my concerns previously known and have waited for several months to allow sufficient time for things to begin moving in a forward motion. I have attended meetings. Due to my frustrations, I can no longer sit and watch and feel it's time to be a more constructive voice for the citizens of O S H County. I plan to become more vocal through social media and the newspaper to hopefully raise awareness and concerns for this matter as well as other matters I have yet to form a solid opinion on.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments? I feel it only respectful to allow any kind of concern or comment from you being to your name specifically.
Yeah, I mean, I've never visited with Susan, but I would welcome if you. I think personal conversations are really important, so if you'd like to meet, I can meet with you and you can ask me anything you'd like to ask and I think that personal conversation can resolve a lot of things. And hopefully, we can do that. So if you give me your information, I can meet this afternoon after this meeting and.
I can answer anything like that today, but we'll set up a appointment.
Okay. Do you have a, what's your contact number?
Christine, you were also mentioned. I think it only fair to give you opportunity. Do you have anything you'd like to say? Mr. Bailey? Thank you for your comments. If there's no other public comment, we'll move on into the normal meeting. Approval of minutes, have you guys had an opportunity to review these? We'll take a few minutes to review these. I believe that was your motion, correct? What's that?
The first thing I think is a motion being made, the second is a motion being made.
Is that what you're asking?
Right, but it says motion and then second, and my name's on both of them. That's why, I don't, I don't get the habit of making seconding my own motions.
This, is that what you're looking at here?
Yeah, that's right here.
This one here in regards to the health insurance, the 50 cent raised due to the health insurance?
Yeah.
Motion?
Yeah.
Because we probably need to reflect that this is in regards to the offset of the the health insurance.
Yeah, there it is, right there, motion to amend PT as well as. What's that again, was a motion by you, Jay, and then second about myself.
I would just, well, I'll finish it and then. Health Department Jackie moves to approve certain.
Yeah, that's the. Should change that to.
What?
Discussion to approve, I did motion, yes. Because she can't make a motion. I'll put discussion to approve. And then I had a time, an attorney report to fix.
And this might be E L C grant.
Yes. What do you have?
Somehow or another, we need to get number 14, the adjournment. We need to get it to the bottom, it looks like the adjournment.
Right, that happened.
That's just as I looked it over, thinking, we know how it happened.
Right. Okay. See anything else? Let a couple of grammatical errors here I corrected. Yeah, I have a question mark on that as well. Do you have a second? Yes, could you come up here? Since this was in regards to yours, you. The man just lost it. Yeah, the head is. Just hang it. There it is, wrong page. Treasurer's office, what's, do you, is this?
So does it type of grade, I'll do that for a little bit longer.
Yeah, but I don't know what she had.
Pay out of county general. What meeting is this from, last week?
Yeah, last week.
Was that when we got the check, Melinda, for? I came, I came up and asked about what fund we paid something out of.
Because it could be treasurer's office directed to pay out of county general, but directed to pay what?
Well, for how much?
Right.
I'd have to, I don't know, I'd have to watch the video, I don't remember. I just know that we got a couple of checks recently and we were reimbursing something and I had to find out what fund that was from to get that back in, but it was, it was paid out of a general fund. Then there was something else, but I don't know that was that.
Is that the other one? Is that the other one? I'm used to whatever they're called.
I don't know, I'd have to watch the video, I don't remember.
Yep, I'll just get with Michelle here. We'll get that corrected. So, did you have something else?
Well, just, what, this here just needs to state that these adjustments were related to health insurance offsets. Or have you stated that that's.
Related to health insurance offsets. Okay.
And then you got E L C, I think you already had that one.
Yep, mark that down.
And then a question mark there.
Yep, let's just send her a picture of that, ask her to elaborate, we'll get that fixed.
And I think this is stockinged.
Yeah, stockinged, stockinged. So I think since we have this level of questions.
Waiting to approve it.
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and get with her on these and then we'll just wait till next week to approve those.
I did have something I didn't have, the general, I didn't have intentionally, but after our committee meeting, we need to have a public building committee. To do some bills, but it'll be after we're terminated.
Well, we can adjourn the commissioner's meeting and then go.
We can adjourn, we want to have it, whatever we got. And that, that'd be, it's just a few bills we have.
Okay. All right. Unfinished business. Christine Foster, follow up job description changes, follow up from 61223 meeting.
If you want to have the discussion with the people since they're here.
Yes, we can do that. We can do that. Do you guys like to come up?
I believe it would be appropriate to let Christine and Heather explain what are perceived issues to our person. They place this on the agenda without consulting us.
Well, so I was just following up. On Wednesday, I believe Nikki had reached out to me and she had several questions and she was frustrated with some things. So I told her that I would get with Christine and see what I could learn about it. So I called her, she looked into it, called me back. And then she kind of explained what the issues were. And I asked her if she'd reach out to Nikki because I didn't know that I could reiterate it correctly. But then also, again, personal conversations are good and then if you had additional questions, she would be the one, you know, to ask about that because I wouldn't be able to answer this. So then I didn't know if you guys had made contact or not, I believe you had.
I called right after we spoke and left a message and didn't receive a call back.
So that, I, I don't know what had occurred after that, but then when you came in the next day and I think you had been upstairs and then, and then came down here. You had similar concerns and questions and frustrations and I, you know, had asked if you had, if Nikki had gotten ahold of Christine or not. So this is just a follow up to that in that trying to answer and get answers to your questions, but also to be fair to the employees that they're able to answer what, what you don't understand or are frustrated about. It's easy to come in and voice that when the people that are involved aren't allowed to be here and then answer that. So this is just about just finishing that up and then if you have anything additional, if it's something that can be done, you know, outside of meeting, that's fine. But to be fair to the employees, I felt like they, I mean, they, there was some very not so nice things said about them and some foul language used and I just felt it was unfair to them. I had, I actually went upstairs during that time. I didn't know Christine was gone to a conference on Thursday. So I went upstairs to see if she was there. I didn't know who else might be up there, I did speak briefly with Rebecca, which I, Rebecca? Who had worked with you that day. So when I was kind of asking her about it and she said, well, I was able to work through all of his issues and we were able to help him. And I said, well, I'm not mad at you at all, I said, I feel bad that he's downstairs complaining and speaking not so nicely and I said, I just want you to know that I'm sorry that's happening, but just, I was needing to learn a little bit more about the situation. So I think it's only fair to the employees that they're able to respond to, to those, I guess accusations. So I reached out, so then Les had also asked if I would want to visit with you after the meeting and I said, I can do that because he had recommended, well, maybe you and Christine and Dwayne can talk. So when I came back, you'd already left. So I reached out to Nikki after the meeting and asked for your contact information, but I hadn't heard back. And then I did call and I left a message and asking for your contact information and then said, we were just going to, I talked to Christine and we felt like it'd be good to put it on the agenda where we can just work through it and hopefully resolve it. I think it's really important that, I think it's good people reach out to us when they have issues and concerns and if they're frustrated and upset, I would prefer they reach out to me and I'm fine with people calling and yelling at me. I, I don't want them to do that to the employees. But as we work to resolve that, I think it's also good that we're constructive and that we can make something productive out of it. And also if there's areas that we can learn something, so if there's something that is found to be where maybe there was an error, that something had occurred in the treasurer's office, that we can identify that and address it, use it as a learning lesson, education and instruct the staff and so then that improves the process going forward. So that's how I like to approach things. I, I was frustrated with the way that you came in here and the way that you were speaking. So I felt it was only fair to the treasurer's office to do this publicly.
That's fair enough, but the question I had was, I would like y'all to explain what your perceived tensions are of our frustrations.
Processes in the treasurer's office and then the, the things that slowed the process down and that's where her answers come in that I can't answer. Sales, some, sales tax.
Yeah.
An estate, something.
Yeah. So initially Nikki came in and ordered Lisa, Lisa's not here today, so she can't come and speak. My understanding in talking with Heather, Nikki, when you called was the amount of time that it took. There was some questions on the transaction that Lisa had to get assistance with from another employee. They were making a phone call to the dealership to try to understand the documentation that was provided for the sale or, or purchase of the vehicle so that we could ensure that we were going to calculate everything correctly based on the fact that the dealership calculated a six and a half percent sales tax rate and provided a check for that as part of the transaction, which six and a half percent is not enough to cover the sales tax here at your residence in the state of Kansas. So why, why did that take place, we were trying to figure that out. There was a $5,000 down payment and I believe the way the document was written, it wasn't clear if that was a trade in vehicle or a, you know, cash payment. Those are treated differently when it comes to sales tax, so we wanted to clarify that. And you made other offhanded remarks to Heather about concerns that you had, but it didn't deal with the actual. but it didn't deal with the actual transaction that we were trying to process for you. So when I got off the phone with Heather, I did call. I left a message on your voicemail and did not receive a call back. I was out of office at a conference Wednesday through Friday for the Treasurers Association, for the state. And I understand that we... When you left, we weren't sure if you were coming back that day. But I believe in my message, I had said that we had worked through the details and, you know, we'd like to know when you're coming back so we could explain those to you. And I think you came back on Wednesday. Can't remember. I know for sure, Dwayne, you were in on Thursday. So when you... Whoever came back, Rebecca was helping. And again, had to get the information. And based on what I've heard from my staff and what you said, Dwayne, in the meeting on Thursday is the check that you wrote was not for the right amount. So we had to call you back for that difference. The insurance card was not returned to you. And beyond the transactional pieces, it was just mostly insults from there. Does that cover it?
Didn't the dealership call your office, though, and ask for the sales tax percentage?
That was stated.
To get that, to make sure that they could charge that in the...
I would like to know who the dealership said they spoke to because I don't... Our staff has not ever refused to provide information. When it comes to sales tax, our typical response is estimate about 10% because what probably none of you know is the sales tax isn't just based on what cash price you pay for a vehicle. It's based on the vehicle. It's based on service contracts you get. It's based on all the extras and your make and model of the vehicle. And if you have like a sport package or this or that. And so it's a lot of information that goes into calculating what sales tax is on a vehicle. So if we don't have the information to be able to put the specific vehicle into the system, and I have no idea because I don't know who they say they spoke to, so I can't follow up. Nobody on the staff recalls having that conversation with the dealership. Then we usually tend to say, you know, estimate about 10%. Now, if they're trying... If the dealership is trying to write a check to put that amount in the loan, of course, they're gonna want a specific amount. But it's not as simple as putting, you know, two things in the system and spinning it out. It's not that easy. So again, I can't follow up on something if I don't know who they spoke to. We spoke to the dealership several times on Tuesday, as well as the state. Nikki contacted the dealership. She contacted the state. So we were chasing this thing all day long. When if we would have had a phone call back to return, we could have explained everything. And another point was when I think the first amount was provided. I think we had forecasted it out to September of '24. Because we're so close to the renewal date, that's typically what people want. And if they tell us, "No, you know, I can't afford that or I don't want to do that. I'll come back in a couple of months," then we push it back to the current year. I don't believe that was communicated to know that that's what they had requested to have. But that came through email through the state, so that was never communicated to our office that that's what they wanted from them. So we didn't know that until we got that information from the state. And then Rebecca was helping Thursday. I believe she had started kind of the same process of putting it out to September of '24 because she wasn't involved in the first transaction. And it was clarified that, no, they just needed it through September of '23, which significantly changed the amount of what was due.
Okay, so I'm working on it too, but on Wednesday because my wife didn't get the transaction completed on Tuesday. I'm not upset with Rebecca. As anybody could have transposed those numbers when she told me email. My frustration was with the follow-up phone call that said, "You transposed two numbers." I wrote the check exactly as she told me because after she gave me the dollar amount, she individually spoke out a each number. 1-0-7-9-64. And that's what I would have checked. Mistakes happen. That's not my frustration. The title word itself and dealing with the vehicle from out of state, I'm not frustrated with that. What I'm frustrated with is the fact that you couldn't possibly begin to find out who the employee was that contacted your office in March and said, "We will deal with that when I come in." Because the chances are greater than not that employee no longer works for you. As I don't recognize any faces in that office except the owners that were. And I was in this building for two years. My frustration comes in the fact that if you had taken the time to give the dealership the numbers or someone in your office had given them the numbers, my wife and I wouldn't have been here last week for a combined total of two hours and 50 minutes in order to get the simple transaction done. As far as you can't just put two numbers in. If the dealership is on the phone with you and they have my place of residence, you can tell them that I live in the county or I live in the city and I'm subject to this sales tax based on where I live. That information would have been a fixed number that you could put... They could put in the system or you could put in the system. You could also ask the dealer what other taxable items are on that vehicle while they're on the phone. I was surprised that my dealer even managed to get ahold of your office because numerous times that I or anyone else tries to contact your office, you can't get ahold of anyone. They won't answer a phone. I've never seen an office with so many people in it that can't answer a phone. My frustration stems from the fact that all of this and the fact that I've had to take off work today, she's had to take time away from work today, graciously enough, our employer let us do that, is that, once again, I'm another example of people in this community who cannot simply go in, spend 15, 20 minutes in your office, do their tags, do their personal property taxes, and have a simple, pleasant experience. When I first moved to this county for 30 years ago, or nearly 30 years ago, people used to brag about being able to come in and out of this building to do their taxes, whether it's for the personal property, the real estate of their vehicles. And then now, and it not being worth the time to shut the car off, people tell me that I used to live somewhere, and it was a nightmare to get my tags and taxes done. And I was like, it's never been like that here. You have successfully created that. Darren is part of the frustration.
And you're entitled to your opinion.
Thank you.
And return phone calls. I know I reached out to you and I left a message and she reached out. So we could have spoke prior to all this.
Well, you did reach out to me, but I cannot answer my question on the phone while I'm at work. I don't get off work until eight o'clock sometimes. I don't think you want a call back regarding county business at eight o'clock at night.
I take calls all hour of the day.
Well, I don't feel like that's an appropriate time to return a business phone call.
It was Wednesday. I think I...
I'm gonna enter my opinion into this, and I do so at my own risk, of course. I normally defend your office and I will continue when I see fit to do so. But you have some folks that are here today voicing valid concerns that are a mounting thing. It's not a one-and-done thing. And all I hear from you guys is defense. I haven't heard an apology yet.
I would disagree with you. Wanda came in and apologized.
Wanda is not you. Wanda is one, and Wanda did great in your absence. She filled in a position. She tried to explain everything as best she could with the information she had. Wanda did great. The one thing that I've seen, and I'm trying not to chastise you in front of everybody. I just... It just has to be said, Christine. You just need to hear this. One of the practices that I have learned in this business is an apology goes a mile further than a lack of an apology. If you would just confront these folks and say, "Hey, I apologize. This is what happened. I apologize. You had a bad instance in this office. We're gonna move forward to fix this." That's what's lacking here. That's my biggest issue, in my opinion. That lack of apologetic attitude towards the people that fund this county and give us our jobs is lacking sorely. That's the biggest issue. I have talked to hundreds of people since I took this office that have all said the same thing. And never once did they say you were a bad person. They just said that they would rather have had some better customer service. And when there was an issue, an apologetic, even if you didn't make a mistake, I still apologize. I'm sorry you misunderstood what I had to say. I apologize. Because part of our job is dealing with the public, and that is good customer service. That's my opinion, and I think that is what's going on. And no offense, but you're not helping. I understand you want to defend her office, and rightly so. We all should. But when our bosses essentially come in here with valid concerns over and over and over and over and over, there comes a point, we have to look at that and we have to deal with that. We have to find out what the issue is and get it taken care of.
So with that conversation, that was my... When she reached out to me, that was my point, was contacting her and reiterating her concerns. It's like, we do want to talk about what were the issues and the concerns they had with the transaction. And there were reasons for that. And it seems like that she can give an answer, but it's just never good enough.
But that's not what I'm talking about, Heather. I think everybody's missed the boat. I hope everybody's understanding what I'm trying to get at. Good customer service is what's missing, and I haven't heard that yet, in my opinion. Not once in this whole discussion did I hear, "We're really sorry that this happened to you." Not once.
Do you think that people have said they're not wanting to provide customer service and they're doing some things intentionally?
But it's not happening. I guarantee they want to. I guarantee you want to. I guarantee that they want to.
My staff apologizes to people all the time.
I'm not talking about your staff previous to this. I'm talking about rightly.
All my staff right now.
In the 15 minutes we've been in this meeting, I haven't heard it come from your mouth and I haven't heard it come from your mouth either. Okay? And it is my opinion, and I appreciate that you honor the fact that I have an opinion and I have a right to it. But again, I wasn't trying to chastise you. I'm just trying to state the fact that I have not yet heard that in this.
And I don't think this discussion is done to the point where I can even say... Right now, I'm having to defend the actions that have taken place because he wanted to know if we understood what his concerns were.
Yeah.
That's what I was doing. So he's entitled to his opinion, and then you jumped in. So I have not had an opportunity to apologize to them. I couldn't apologize to Nikki because we didn't get on the phone. And I can guarantee Wanda apologized, Rebecca apologized, every one of the staff members up there now or before apologized. What you guys don't hear is all of the great customer service that people do get.
Oh, I have heard some of that too. And I've been very vocal to you about that, so...
But those people don't come here. All they hear is the negative, which is fine. That's the way things operate. You always get the squeaky wheel. So I am sorry that we had to take time to clarify the transaction, but our job is to make sure that we handle transactions properly. Are all dealership bill of sales the same, Jay? No. Are all titles the same?
They have a ratio on the bill of sales. Are you just going to say?
No.
The dock fees. But at the end of the day, you have a selling price. You gotta trade in. You gotta trade in if you got... If they put a warranty or whatever.
Have you looked at a real sales from other dealerships and out-of-state?
Absolutely. And I would rather you... Out-of-state titles are handled a little differently only because they have to be inspected when they come into the state of Kansas. And looking at his documents...
Which most people don't even know, but...
Looking at his documents the other day, there was something that I noticed that we don't do. And if you don't know, I'm a licensed Kansas auto dealer, so I understand how to do sales tax. But on a licensed Kansas dealer, when somebody from Missouri or Oklahoma or Texas or wherever buys a part from us, we don't collect them one cent in the sales tax. We give them an out-of-state tax affidavit and send them on the way. They take that to their courthouse. That's how they pay their tax off of them. In his case, it came in that they had a document that showed that they paid six-and-a-half percent sales tax, which was the state's sales tax. I've never seen anybody ever collect them all that. So in... Other than a lease, I have seen on leases where they have to call and then not only do they get the property tax, they gotta get property tax, license title fees, and sales tax fees because the taxes are collected on a monthly payment, not on the self-ops. So that's your difference in your purchase rates. But this one, again, I've never seen a licensed dealer in any other state collect sales tax and then send it to us. So the phone call would have been, I would say it's got a sales tax rate. I don't know where the 10% or close to 10% because it's 8% in those states counting. The only thing that'll change it, if we live in any city.
Which makes it nine and a half.
It's six-and-a-half percent for the state and then... Yeah, six-and-a-half percent for the state and one-and-a-half percent for the county. And like in London, we pay another two cents to the... It's nine-and-a-half percent total going into... That we collecting. I think that's the highest that we have in those states counting. And I think all of the cities are now.
And that's why we sell them to round it to about 10%. Because again, typically it's, "I bought this..." We're just using a lot of time for this transaction stuff. But bottom line is, we apologize often for the amount of time it takes to work through some transactions. Whether it's the state system has gone down, we have to look up the information because we don't understand clearly what happened in the transaction. Out-of-state titles cause another level of review because they're out of state and they're all different. And so the fact that you were in there for an extended period of time, we don't enjoy that any more than anybody else does. We see the lines forming. We don't like that and we do our best to help people. But we are there to also make sure it's done correctly. So whatever it takes to do that correctly is what action was being taken when you were in there Tuesday.
But in that timeframe of you see the line building, you see that there's people coming in and getting in line. While I was waiting to even be seen, you yourself came through and asked if anybody had any personal property tax to take care of. Every person in that room said no, but one nice older gentleman that said, "I just have a couple of questions," and you walked away. You didn't even acknowledge that poor old man.
I don't recall that.
He literally, he was... Came in after I did. And when I went up to Lisa's station and she began humping me, Rebecca was able to take his questions that took all of three minutes to answer.
So it's probably motor vehicle, would be my guess. I don't know.
Well, but you're here speaking on behalf of what is done for motor vehicle anyway. As the treasurer, shouldn't you be able to answer simple questions about motor vehicle registrations?
Of course.
His questions were merely about purchasing an out-of-state vehicle and what he needed to provide. But you walked away from it.
I'm...
He wasn't me. He didn't speak under his breath. He very clearly stated, "I just have a couple of questions," and you turned around and walked away.
I would disagree with that, but...
Well, I know what I saw with my own two eyes. He also stated that he had called the day before five times and no one had returned a phone call. But no one ever returned a phone call from your office.
That is incorrect. We have books upon books upon books of messages that we take every day. And when we return them, who returns them, what messages we leave, so that people like you and Mrs. Drake can be informed of when we try to return calls.
And how come so many people say they never get a phone call back? Are those people all being fictitious and saying that they are making phone calls to your office and they're actually not?
A lot of people call and call and call and never leave a message. People call and they don't leave phone numbers. I have two messages upstairs where a gentleman said, "I guess I'll try to call back later." No name, no phone number, no what issue he's calling for. We can't help people if we don't have the information. But I will defend to the end. My staff, we take... And I shouldn't have to. But that's the whole reason we keep books, is because of accusations like this that are incorrect. I'm not saying people don't call. They call and call and call and call and call. You don't like having to wait an hour and 45 minutes? So do you want me to answer phones? Do you want me to help the customers? Do you want me to have people training in driver's license? The staff is a limited number. Jay Bailey has a concern with the number of people that are in the office. Well, guess what? If I had even less because he's concerned about the number, then you would have even less service. So we are doing the best that we can with the staff that we have, with the training that we're able to get through the state to be able... to be able to do the things that we do. And yes, people are new, so they are going to take longer to do something because they want to do it right and they're in training. They need to ask those questions. They don't want to do something wrong.
I can completely appreciate that people don't want to do something wrong. Because trying to figure out someone's tax of what they own vehicle is a big deal. And that is fine. But when there was absolutely no communication to me as I stood there for one hour at Lisa's station, other than it's going to be just a few more minutes, it's going to be a few more minutes. Every person that came in and talked about how I had to take the day off of work to come and do my tax. You shouldn't have to take a whole day off of work to come and do your tax to stand in the tax office.
And you don't have to. There's other options to renew your tax.
Not if you're bucking purchase a brand-new vehicle. You still have to come in to your office to get that taken care of. Our title had sat in your office for three weeks. Why did that sales tax number not have been already figured and taken care of?
That's information that is new to me as of right now. I don't even.
You can look at the documentation on the FedEx paperwork that all of our information was contained in, that your staff took it out of when we were there to get it tagged on Tuesday. That FedEx paperwork was sent, I don't have the exact date, but it was approximately three weeks ago because I had to come in and get a additional thirty-day tag for my vehicle because the title had not been received by your office from the dealership. So it has sat in your office for three weeks.
And the point being that you came in on Tuesday to title your vehicle?
My point being is that it sat in your office for three weeks with no action. What is the problem with if there are people in your office and you've received people's title work? Isn't that title work not, nothing is touched on it until the person walks into the office?
So again, this is new as of right now. I was not aware that we had the title work. I'm sure there was something done with it because we open them and we look at what needs to happen. Sometimes we're waiting on the titles because we've reached out to different states or what have you. So I don't have that information readily available because again, this is as of right now.
Well, in dealing with our situation, it should have been glaringly apparent because the.
I just got in the office an hour and a half ago from being gone during this whole scenario. I caught up with my team. I asked Wanda to join because she did come down to speak to the commissioners already. And that is not any information that I heard in Dwayne's rant on Thursday or any of the communication that I received.
You heard what you wanted to hear.
No, actually, I wrote down verbatim what you said, starting with, you've got an effing train wreck up in the treasurer's office and they allowed you to proceed.
Oh, it's the truth. No.
Again, that's your opinion.
Can I add something? I came in on the end of May just to title a vehicle. And I was waiting forty-five minutes. I counted the people. There were six employees. There were two people waiting on people. After forty-five minutes, I pulled this out and started taking notes on it because the two people that were waiting on customers were brand-new. There was another lady sitting at the desk in between them, working on her computer and would just answer questions. So as I started taking notes and looking around, another lady that was standing there noticed that I was taking notes. So she went to the end and asked if there was anybody there that needed any help, and she started helping. But there were two people for forty-five minutes taking care of a line of people, and there were six people in the office.
Have you reached out to Christine to visit with her?
Nope.
I think part of our concern and reservation to individually reach out is because there's so many people that don't realize that they have the same concern. And so why not let other people know that we have that concern? So that other people can come in and voice their experience and share their experience so that it's out there in the open. Because consistently having personal conversations about it doesn't obviously fix anything. I mean, if all these people have problems, if nothing's moving forward, I would like to see, you know, what's going to be, is there a plan to help improve customer service and employee retention and those sorts of things through the treasurer's office? I would be willing to offer anything I could be of assistance. I'm in a customer service-based industry, and there are a lot of things that you do that, like let's say, sometimes saying you're sorry is all you have to hear to make the situation better. But no one ever says, I'm sorry it's taking, you might hear, I'm sorry it's taking so long, but there was never any, I'm sorry, we're having trouble figuring out the tax situation. I'm sorry, we're having trouble figuring out why your dealer sent a check for this amount and doesn't equal anything that we have. No one ever asked me that question. May I speak?
Sure.
Okay.
For you guys that don't know me, I am new. I'm your deputy treasurer. And I want you to know, pardon me, I'm very sorry. I'm very sorry. I hate, I hate what's is going on. I'm new. I don't know any of you guys. But as your deputy treasurer, I am sorry. And I will do whatever I can to help anybody in this county. I'm not from here. I didn't know Christine. I kinda knew Heather. I didn't know these gentlemen. I'm new. I don't know anybody. But had I known all of this was going on, I didn't know I knew, you know? But please, from my heart, I'm sorry. Remarking, that's not our intentions, guys. It really isn't. I'm sorry. I'm emotional because I'm sad that you guys are sad. I hate it. But I will tell you Friday, we had a line, and I did everything I did. And then all of a sudden, rumors, you're not coming with us, it is motor vehicle stuff. You know, they don't, it was there for forty-five minutes. They sent out an email. I went to my team. We're down again. That's, that's not our fault. It's not your guys' fault. So those people who are there, I will now, I say, sorry, guys, it's going to be a little bit, and then maybe upset them. Oh, great, here we go again. That's not our intentions.
Those of us that have done tax and taxes in the county or in the state of Kansas, as I've been here four years in the state, are very used to the state system going down. We understand that it's quite accelerated and it bleeds up very. That's not something that you can fix.
Right.
That blocks our, our representation of the center version. That's understandable, especially in today's technology-driven world. And you're going to break. I would want you to hear, the state system is down. At least I know.
Sure, sure, sure. But I, when I had walked into this, I did not realize how much money it took. We just don't pay some taxes to the community. They're a true estate. That is, we have no authority to buy and back real estate. It's not for the treasures. It's for the community, for the county of the state. There's a lot of work, but I have no idea. I've been doing it for my home life, and I've never done anything like this. So I get your frustration. But if anybody ever wants to talk to me, I'll be quiet and give you my own number. But I'm here to support this, this tough journey. And I apologize that you guys don't do that. I'm sorry that you're upset.
I feel like consolidating the two departments is not a good choice.
It's tough, guys.
Because you could walk in and do your tax, and sure, you could walk in and do your tax, property taxes. And I feel that having them together, some things take longer, so even though you're only there for a five-minute thing, you're there. I have to plan at least an hour if I come down here for something simple. And so before, we knew if we were doing our cars, we went in this door, if we were doing our crop taxes, we went in this door. And they were trained specifically on that job. So faster, they became more efficient. So even though I saw the basis, they were doing one thing over and over and over and over, and they got more efficient. Now, they're learning everything, which is making them less efficient.
Right. And just with the new crew that we have, you can't get into the state computers. You can't even get a login until you take all the testing. I have learned that, I will vouch that I try to answer the phone as soon as I can. But when you have three clients ringing and each person at the station is waiting on a customer, it's not fair if it was you, you were you, to say, I'm sorry, I tried to answer the phone. I have to say, I monitor that phone records, and I'll be glad to get it for you. We call them back. Do we have hangups? We have a lot of hangups. We used to keep track every day, how many hangups we have. I monitor that. I, even if I have specific notes that the girls take when they call them back, I even put it on the back of it in case they did call back. I can say, well, your statement of law was this, as of this day. Two weeks later, it's now this. I'll be glad to share that with you, but we do call them back and do not answer the phone all the time. No, we don't, but it's not fair to a customer at a hang window or, you know.
And I get that, but when there's two people waiting on customers and four people not waiting on customers and they're not answering their calls.
And there's some of them that can't get in with this scenario, that are not fully trained. I get that. I, I just want you guys to know that on behalf of Christine and the treasurer's office, myself, I'm personally sorry. And I will do whatever I can to help Christine to get these girls. I have a girl do nothing but Thursday, Friday, finish up her movers training, so we can get her to do that. As far as the driver's license, it's a big horse to take to get that going. And then this, you can only go to speak like once a month to take the final test to get it done and going. We were headed in that direction. We got people trained, we got background checks on people, so they can do it. But please note from me, your deputy treasurer, I am sorry. And you're more than welcome to reach out to me, and I will do what I can to help you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have anything for? I think you've been beat on enough. So I think you've been beat on enough.
I have another agenda item. Do you want to talk about it?
Yes, you do. Let's move on to that. Follow-up, job description changes, follow-up from six twelve.
I presented the information last week, and it was asked that you guys have time to review it, and it would be on the agenda for this week. So I don't know if there's further questions.
Actually, the people that I reached out to told me that I needed to call them back in July because they were too busy to talk. And Jim had two and stuff on their agenda, but I did take some basic information that I had from the sheet that you used. First of all, I want to clarify, being clarified to me about what you said, I was talking about, if I don't support more staff or whatever else.
No, you have raised a concern in another meeting that I have nine staff and you don't understand why.
So I'll go, let's start from this. I'll go back to your description of your, the thing that you brought to us on job descriptions.
Okay.
So currently in the county and has been for the last sixty years, we have clerk one, two, three deputy treasurer. So what you presented to us is now I have clerk one, two, three, tax league, motor vehicle league, finance coordinator, deputy treasurer. So in essence, you've created three positions that are already there, but it's all you got to do is call them clerk three, clerk two, clerk one. That's how they've done in the past. The clerk three has always been one of these people, clerk two has been one, and clerk two has been one, and they may give them extra roles that are made to be in the motor vehicle league. So I went back through some payrolls back in two thousand twenty-one, and we came in and have those numbers here. But based on the numbers that you projected for January first, two thousand twenty-four, is that it? We'll get the twenty-three. Because those were, again, these are your ones, not mine, is this, we aren't creating positions, we're just moving, we're redescribing. Is that correct?
Right, so we're taking the functions that specific roles have played and having a job description that fits what they do, along with the job title and a pay scale, which is what I believe as commissioners, you've asked us to do as department heads and present.
Which I agree to an extent, and here's what extent is. You can still do that within clerk three, two, one positions instead of creating three additional positions because what that does is effectively raises the budget numbers to a little over four hundred thousand dollars plus by the time you figure personnel and the forty thousand dollars on the extra money, the, the two Cs, what it's called, on the budget.
The two what? Oh, commodities and the traction. Like the two Cs, I don't know.
The two Cs. So it would in essence make that a budget four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And your request as the commissioners, it's nowhere near that.
And that's based on how many staff?
Correct. That's based on what these numbers are right here currently.
Okay.
So that's very concerning. That's why I want to get ahold of the others and see how they do this. Do they actually have these positions or do they fall under clerk one, two, three?
I'm happy to share with you all of the other, the state and the other counties that provided their job descriptions, pay scales, et cetera.
I can show you several around us, and none of them have a budget anywhere near this, and that's why I'm asking that. But again.
I'm not asked for their budgets.
Right. And that's where I do ask for the budget, because the budget is important here, because at the end of the day, what is the budget? Because when we set your budget, you can do what you want with it. But I can't take your budget and make your budget, I mean, you're asking for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase from last year's budget.
So let me just clarify that. When I presented this, in my memo, I stated that the fifty cent increase that was being given to the commissioners, when we were working on the twenty-three budget, I specifically asked if I needed to account for that in my budget, and I was told, no. That would, commissioners are giving that, that's like general fund money. Okay, so I didn't do that. And so I took that same premise, and I asked again when we were getting ready to do twenty-four budgets. And I think Les, you told me, account for it and account for any other raises that you might want to do, cost of living and things like that. So I did take that into consideration. But because the twenty-three budget didn't account for the, in essence, did we get fifty cents and fifty cents, the extra dollar per person, which then also raises the starting pay for new hires, that's why you see such a disparaging number between twenty-three and twenty-four as a basis for the budget.
But what I'm saying is the value you turned in to us at our previous meeting was nowhere near these numbers. So after you come in and ask us stuff that we didn't have a vote on, but you had that conversation, and then it comes back to this pay point. So that brings me to some other, I wouldn't do the pay point since we've been here when it started and all that, which is for another pay.
The what? Would you say the payroll?
I have the payroll from when we started over right now. But because I agreed with when we came in, or the pay in all the offices were not good. So we've been working at trying to fix that in all the offices, which brings me back to another deal. But when I become a county commissioner, one of the first things I got, I mean, we went to KAC conference, and I had the other one witness, but they gave us a sheet of paper, and here's one of the things that it said. The county commissioners are charged with overseeing and coordinating all county operations, much like a contractor oversees the building of a house. It's imperative that the county commissioners keep the big picture in mind when making all decisions. It's imperative that the county commissioners keep the big picture in mind when making all decisions. It is through their decisions that the plan for success is laid out. The commissioner is in charge of all financial decisions. This begins with the budgeting process. Each department prepares their annual budget and submits it to the commissioners for approval. They are given the task of reviewing them and either approving them or changing them based on the current state of the economy. The commissioners also draft all policies and guidelines used to make the decisions that each department has to make on a day-to-day basis. These policies are imperative because in most counties, the commissioners are not available on a day-to-day basis to make those decisions. With that being said, one of the key things is, is the budget. Is that when we do a budget, I don't want to watch what you do with your budget. It's your budget, you use it how you want. But when somebody brings me something that creates three different positions within their budget, then that is something we have to part five because we have all the other offices in the boardhouse. And that's the big picture. Is that it's got to be something that works for everybody and that's why they've always had a certain system they used. Now, the county couldn't afford to do all these things, especially if we got to do this in every department. And we're talking.
Has any other department presented anything to you yet?
It won't be far behind, but this can come through. I mean, that's the way this works. That's why I say the big picture, we're looking at the big picture. That's my opinion. And again, I'm one of three, so it's just an opinion. But that's why I need a lot more information to study this and make sure that we understand exactly what we're doing. Because this is something that would affect the county three years ago. If every department does this, you're talking about raising mills, probably seven mills. So it would get pretty expensive for the county tax dollars and that's what my job does. I'm one of those too. I'm a tax commissioner. So we have to look at that at every thing that we look at. And again, I told you that, I didn't think this is a bad idea having this laid out. I don't like the position of finance coordinator. I think we were talking about that and it does not go that way. The motor vehicle driver's license leave, I think has already been there. They just put it with the clerk position and added all pay. The tax leave, I don't know if they've ever had that. But when you take those three positions and had those paid up, that's an increase in the budget. Once the budget's increased, if the other positions aren't filled, you use them by anybody who wants. But I've never not supported you of anybody you've asked to hire. We're talking about pay, we're not talking about who gets hired. We're talking about the main budget number. If you're within that budget number, I can care less how many people we hire. It's when we look at the budget and what's changed in the last 10 years. The budget, well, I can go back to 18, 17, 18. But you go back to the budgets and you look and the budget right now is in another atmosphere over what it was. So then I went and said, okay, how can this happen? So I went and asked for, and got, again, the other counties. And I went and finally asked Melinda, the payout from the motor vehicle fund that comes back to pay for staffing. We're at the lowest amount ever in 06 county in what we're getting paid back from the motor vehicle fund. So I don't know how, when that's dropped. But if I recall, Melinda helped me here, the ticket we got the last one was supposed to be 87,000. We got 40,000. And that same history going back, the payments are usually about 130 to 150,000. So based on those numbers, we're going to, I don't want to go up, but now we're going to take less out of the motor vehicle fund that comes in to pay this. The way that's happening is, well, we just call them all, both two-way employees. So that way we just cut it in half. The problem with that is the state money that you collect should be paying for the employees that are doing the motor vehicle fund. Well, if you're saying a half employees because the other half are taxed, that means the county taxpayers are having to make up that money. So we got to make up 40,000 that we didn't receive last year already. And then we're going to have to make up whatever the split is this time.
The motor, go ahead. I'll make it up.
The money that's reimbursed at county should have been, and I got too many papers out here, so. It's 80 some thousand and instead we got 40.
When is this?
It would have been last year. Also, the motor vehicle.
For 20, all of 22, you're saying we only reimburse the county 40,000?
No, the first half.
Okay, in 22.
Let me get you, no, in 2022, the second half payment shows 87, 757, 12. The county received 43, 878, 56, which is half of that. The 2023 first half that's currently due right now is 77,483, 14.
Is that the one you were just working on? Okay, was what, 47?
77,483, 14 cents. But 2022, again, was the 87 that got cut to 43. And then I go on back to the other years that I have. And also to my, I called them out because I wasn't sure how all of this worked. But that fund is supposed to be zeroed out at the end of each year.
Correct.
It gets cut into the general fund.
Correct.
In 2020, 21, I found that they did that. In 22, now they switched any money over, it was literally fun down to zero.
I don't take the funds to zero. That happens in the clerk's office.
So who, who's in charge of that fund?
The fund, as the treasurer, I'm in charge of it. But I don't do the functions of zeroing out accounts and bringing them where we, whether we say we have encumbrances that we need to pay or what have you. So if that's not the same process for that specific fund, I was not aware and I can certainly write the check. But yes, every year, that fund, if there's any money left over, goes to the county general fund.
So the 87,000 of his last year's second half, she's in charge or whoever in that office is in charge of all that money?
That, how the fund gets zeroed out, I don't know how they do that process.
Not talking about how any money's come out of the fund.
Melinda gives me the, the number she gave you for the second half, so the salary number. And then we issue a check out of our office from that fund. The account gets hit and then it goes into the general fund.
So how does that number go from 87, 7 to 43, 8?
I have to look at that because I don't agree that that's probably apples to apples. Because when I first started last February, I had to catch up and pay the second half of '21. So that came out in '22. And then I think I wrote two more checks in '22 for compensation. And then we just got the first half of '23. And you're looking at stuff I don't even have in front of me. But I've looked at that fund a lot because that's my understanding.
The number, it shows the printout sheet what it comes out. So that was definitely cut down to 43,000. When I asked what was going on, I was told that they just did half of the amount. Is that what you, it's one of them, Melinda?
Whatever is, I won't speak out of turn. The only reason I would think that we would have done that is if you took the staff at 100% and we said, no, it's only 50%. I don't recall that happening, but again, I'll have to look at that fund. But with regards to the fund and the budget, that was the other issue that I brought up at budget time, is we don't have a clear accounting procedure and documentation as to whether or not the budget that is set for the treasurer's office under the general fund is reflective of the motor vehicle fund reimbursing that or not. And that was another thing that I brought up for the 24 budget. So again, I think the data, and I've reviewed it too. Jay, I just don't have it in front of me and I didn't refresh my memory. The data that I have seen, that fund does get cleared out every year. It is supposed to go back to the general fund if we don't use it all. And it can be used for other things other than salary, like motor vehicle supplies and things that we have to pay for. But there's nowhere else that that money goes. But the process of zeroing out funds, I don't know that process. So again, if that's my responsibility, that's new to me and I can certainly do that task.
So with that being said, though, I would like to table this and tell Scott Lloyd's here on the, is that motion? Yes, I think that's on the 29. Is that when it comes again?
28.
28.
Of June or July.
Of this month, yes.
Can I, I have a couple questions. And maybe I'm not reading right. What are the current titles now? I read through this.
So current.
What's the current titles compared to?
Current titles are clerk three, two, one, a deputy treasurer and a treasurer. Back to Jay's point, if I could just comment to that before your next question, Heather. Just because we've been doing something for 60 years doesn't mean that there's not time for change. I believe, and I've worked in a lot of different industries and have managed HR, have been HR myself. When you have people doing a job, you want the job descriptions to accurately reflect what they do on a day-to-day basis. Because one, you put a job description out and if you hire someone and they're doing something drastically different, that can cause issues and people may just quit and say, that's not what the job was. Secondly, I'm not looking to change or get rid of the clerk one, two, three. I think that that's a great opportunity for growth for people. But those jobs are specifically those jobs, that's what those people do. The other thing is because we've had deputies and deputies in every position and clerks three, two, one, those job descriptions should not all be the same. What someone does in the appraiser or the registeredes or the clerk or any other office separate from mine will be different responsibilities. So if it's a matter of you don't want me to have three different job titles, then I will review the clerk one, two, three and provide you an updated job descriptions for those. But there will be specific people who have those specific functions because they need to be done in the office.
Right, so with that being said, I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is the job descriptions that are there could be in clerk three, clerk two, clerk one. That's how they're done currently at all. And other departments in other counties do that because they don't have numerous whatevers. Now, there are some counties that have finance coordinator, but they're not part of the treasures. Obviously, they're part of the entire county. We talked about that, we chose not to go that far. So that's a different discussion completely. But there's a bunch of things there, but the change in 60 years. I don't disagree, it's sometimes can be changed. But change, just for the sake of change, is not good. And that's what's happened. There's a lot of changes going on that haven't worked out well. So again, we'll change some of that back. I guess is the question some of these people have and maybe I'm having too. That is not, but this is totally different from that. Because this is just talking about, when I came in, and KAC talks about this all the time, is elected offices can run their offices as they see fit. So your most important job with them is to make sure you set their budget correctly. That is all we do. I mean, if we're doing anything other than trying to set your budget, then we're overstepping our job descriptions. We should not be doing that. So when we set your budget, your budget is set. So the discussion for this year is not, is null and void. It's what we do in '24, which is your next budget. Which is why I say with the budget plans here, we can sit down and say, look at the numbers, here's what they are. And that's what it all comes down to, is whether there's money to pay for it or not. And that's not just your department, that's Lyndis Department, that's the Bronx Department, that's Greg, that's Sheriff's Department, that's any department that is involved in this. It's all we're going to have to go through that process. That's why we need them here, because they're making a lot more. They can look at the numbers and can tell you a lot better than I can. I can look at the numbers and see what they are, but there's still other things that go into it and that's the information on this. The one thing I did find out during this phone calls, and I don't know if this is an address because I didn't know anything about it, but Thursday is the first time I heard it. Motor vehicle budgets that we do on May 10th still aren't out.
That's going to be another conversation later. Right now, though, I feel like we need to move on. There's a motion been made to table this to the June 28th meeting for review.
Heather has some other questions.
If you would like to provide them with the information that he's asking for, if you have any adjustments or whatever, please send that out to us in an email. And I hate to cut you off with any further questions, but we have a nine o'clock that we have zoomed right past. And I think we've hit on this very extensively. So I will second the motion to table this item.
And then when you say send it out to Scott Lloyd?
To everybody that needs it.
Okay.
I'm not going to direct which person you send it to, just send it to everybody that needs it.
This stuff that I.
Yeah. So the motion's been made and seconded and all in favor. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Would you check out another thing for me? That's in the, on the pants that are.
We have a nine AM with Darren Booth. And I apologize.
Are you wanting to take a little break or anything like that?
Do you guys need a recess for a few minutes, Heather?
Well, he's on there for 30 minutes.
Yeah, that's why I was asking. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you for, thank you guys for your patience, I apologize.
I might run over there real quick too.
Being it was your idea.
Oh, yeah, Derek, right?
That was awesome.
That's really deep.
Normal stuff. Normal stuff. Here's the training setup here in there.
Hold on, I know where you want to go, son. And technically, I may have to use... Sorry, I don't remember that. I'll do the last one, too. Because there's one of those.
It's not a bad idea, is it? Okay. We'll get Heather back in here and go back into... Thanks again for your patience.
Yeah, bro.
Good morning. Good morning.
Your name, Les Holman, seen on the emission company website, and a guy that played football in high school named Les Holman, he probably was a basketball player, he was a student at the foot out.
From where?
Crest High School.
That's my uncle.
He's what?
That's my uncle.
Really? Les?
Yep.
Really?
Crest. Yep, that's my uncle. Actually...
Tell you what, that kid played football.
I wore his number in high school.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where actually the namesake, I guess it doesn't fully come from him, but the namesake started out with Lester back in, way back in, like, great, 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 great grandfathers. And then they changed it at his generation to Leslie, and then they just kept handing that one down.
I was the quarterback, and he was the running back.
Really?
Oh, yeah. It was awesome. We had a great team then.
That's awesome. That's awesome.
I love talking to him every now and then.
Yeah? That's awesome. Yeah, he had two kids that graduated from Crest.
Yeah.
But they didn't play sports. It's kind of funny. Almost drove me nuts.
I know.
But he did have a son, Paul.
Yeah, he went to the Ferristers.
Yeah, Paul played at Arizona. He was a secondary fullback for a long time, and then he ended up coming back and finishing his career at Point State, so he was real good. Yeah, that's a small world.
It is. You know, Les Holman, then, well, maybe those related than you are, man.
Yeah.
Gee, don't you know Paul and Pam?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're actually gonna be down there into next month, I believe, for family reunion.
Yeah.
Yep.
See, Brian was still in there one time.
Maybe not so much.
Pathe Stolen, his sister.
Okay.
And I hear Stolen, they were in sports when they...
Yeah, some of the older ones. Of course, I was the little guy when we were going down, because it's once a year, but the ones that are still around are the ones that I'm closest with. Been a lot of family that's not around anymore. Sad.
Things kinda die a lot.
It does. Larry, could you, Barb? Barb, could you whisper in Heather's ear real quick?
Yes.
About her back there. She has perfect timing. Your internal clock must have been ticking, too. Okay. Darren?
Yes.
Thanks again.
You bet.
You have a cool.
Okay, so what, I laid out in front of you guys. There's a business card and everything on there, but I'm Darren Booth. I'm with Teal Insurance, and I actually live between Hayesville and Derby in Wichita, south of Wichita, and the guy that owns Teal Insurance is Guy Jensen, or David Jensen, when he goes by. And he's actually, his business isn't for you. And so, basically, I'll tell you a little bit about myself. In November of 19, I've been working for a company for over 30 years called Lubrication Engineers Wichita, and I was VP of Operations there, and thought I'd retire there. Things changed. It wasn't COVID. They got me. There were some business guys got above me, and they made the decision to get rid of four of them. So my life drastically changed. So the day I met Daley, or he was my first financial advisor for 20 years, me and my wife, and so he said, "Hey, why don't you come to work with me?" And I said, "I don't want to do insurance." Just like when I walk in and talk about insurance, your eyes roll back in your head, just kind of like what I did when I was on your side. So I, about a year later, he came back again, and he said, "What do you think?" I said, "Listen to me." And I knew, I knew one thing. I was done managing people. I just wanted to go out and do something on my own, and this, I started doing some guys I just loved. I never thought I'd be doing what I'm doing. And so, we teamed up with Freedom Claims Management out of Great Bend, and the lady that owns that's Julie Yorma. It's farmer with a Y. She started that business about 39 years ago. And when we started doing group health insurance with me and Daley and stuff, well, we'd run up against her in these counties and stuff. They said, "We don't want to change there. She does a great job for us." So we wouldn't matter, and we teamed up with her. She don't have a sales force. Basically, you just kind of word of mouth, as we're kind of agents, and go out and help spread the word. So we teamed up with her. So, and that was kind of her, her sweet spot, was start working with counties when she started doing the business. And so we, we've got about 26% of the counties in the state of Kansas doing this concept. Guys, there's a reason they're doing it. We just had six of them last year, and I think they're on the bottom on the left there. There's a lot of cities that got it, got it as well, but, and there's a lot of businesses and everything like that, too, but we just want to put that together for the, for you guys to see on the cities and county side there. So, so basically, Freedom Claims, we would actually go to them, just like anybody else. They're gonna go out and get your numbers, or you guys will provide the numbers, and we would quote your business with shopping with other, other groups. This isn't on your, on your sheet, okay? But, you know, you see a comparison sheet. I'm just showing an example comparison sheet. You're gonna have your current, where you're at. You're gonna have your renewal rates came in. It's also gonna show other options that we provide, okay, that we went out and shopped with. We look at the high deductible plan, and I don't want you guys, "Oh, my gosh, high deductible on the employee. You can't do that." I'm, I'm gonna tell you, that's not what I'm talking about. So, but you look at the cost on something like that, like on this particular current plan, you go to the renewal. It was a 2.21% decrease on a county. This is a certain county. And then we looked at the high deductible plans. Well, the high deductible Blue Cross Blue Shield, and there's two options, Blue Cross and one of United Healthcare, they were running from 36.51% decrease to 44.76% decrease. Huge decreases. That's on the premium line, okay? So you think, "How do you do this? How do you make that happen?" And hearing what you guys are talking about, your budgets and everything, it's gonna be right along the lines with what you guys are talking about. So, so let's say we pick a Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, and we bring it to that really colorful thing there, okay? That is your illustration. So you got that in front of you, okay? Here's your illustration. So that black belt across there, that's the high deductible plan. That's for Blue Cross Blue Shield plan, okay? And that's a $6,000 individual, $12,000 per family, okay? That's the plan that the, that you would purchase. Now, down below there, okay, it says down here, red star here, and you're gonna work up. In that blue area, that is the area where we designed the employee plan underneath the high deductible plan. So if you have a deductible, say, $1,000, or $15, or whatever options you have, each option would have its own illustration, but we'll put that deductible wherever that option is, right there. So pretend that you have a $1,500 deductible, okay? We would match it, whatever that is, for the employee. So they wouldn't see a change there, okay? And then up above here in the blue says a employee cost share max. So in this particular sample group, the county and the employee do a 50-50% cost share max, and that's the second blue area, and the tan area up here right above it that says 50%. That tan area is the important area for the county, okay? That number, whatever's in that box, is the one that impacts you guys' maximal ability as it pertains to claims, okay? So in that blue area down here, you go to the right, your facility copay business to the doctor, or your prescription drug prices and stuff like that, that would, we would just match that, okay? That just stays the same. So your set area employee would look at it and say, "Okay, what's our..." Let's say you guys, are you guys with Aetna right now? Okay, so you're with Aetna, and let me see, your renewal's January 1. Is that what it is? Correct?
Well, the contract here is July. The deductible is January.
Oh, so July 1 is your renewal then, right? So are you still, so you just renewed then?
We just renewed on a, is it monthly basis?
Right, definitely, six months to get to January 1.
Oh, to get to January. So basically, with January, we could actually...
So we're gonna be shopping again in the fall.
Hmm, okay. And then roughly, you got around 102 people? Is that right, roughly? Somewhere around that? That's all in your plan?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, so basically, when you look, take this blue area, that $1,500 and the $22.50 and the $22.50, all three of those numbers total, total $6,000, okay? Okay, so let's think about this. So after it hits $6,000 total, between the employee in the blue area and the employer, okay, and employer, that money there is gonna be out of reserves, okay? This is nothing new. And I'm gonna show you how that works. So then once it totals $6,000, as an individual, $12,000 per family, it's 100% on the umbrella carrier. So if you have a heart patient, if you have cancer patient, whatever, after $6,000 individual, $12,000 per family, 100% on the carrier. Here, 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 you pick Blue Cross, Aetna, you name it. 100% on, okay? All right. So let's go to the next, real quick, right here. This little box right here, it tells you that this is a medical expense reimbursement program, which is out of Internal Revenue Code 105, or 106.
105.
105. Been around for years, guys. I worked for Lubrication Engineers for over 30 years, and we did Blue Cross Blue Shield for years, had IMAs or broker for years, and stuff, a great group, but I never seen a plan like this the whole time I was there, ever. The major scan present is what I'm showing you, okay? It's gotta go through somebody like us, okay? Now, let's turn to page two.
I do have a quick question.
Yes.
So there are different tiers of deductibles that add to $6,000. The coincidence is, there's no out-of-pocket.
Is that for you guys at this point?
No, I'm asking this.
Oh, yeah, your total out-of-pocket on this particular sample, great question. The total out-of-pocket on this particular sample would be $37.50.
For the...
The $1,500 deductible plus your 50% there, be $37.50. Whatever's in that blue area, and you guys decide that.
And after out-of-pocket, it's 100%?
After it hits the total $6,000, yeah, it's 100%.
So these two deductibles that the employee get met first, and then the third deductible is the employer?
Yes. Yep, yep. Okay, page two. So we're just pretending, you guys, on the top here, it says illustrative rates and renewal right here across in the green area. We're gonna pretend you guys got, you're spending $87,000 a month, okay? Don't know what it is. But right above that shows how many employees. There's 73 employees and 160 in the group, okay, on this particular county. So I didn't come in here, guys. You guys have already got the budget in your renewal area. You've already got a plan for a little increase, and you're planning what you're gonna spend on major medical for this year, and you just go ahead, and we're not gonna do anything but just stay the same course. We're spending our $87,000. We don't hear anything from you, Darren, okay? But, okay, so you spent $87,000, you're gonna renew. But down below there, it says insured option. That's $67,000, okay? So let's think about that. That's what you'd be spending for a high deductible plan. That's about a $19,000 difference. So let's think about how insurance really works. So you pay your premium every month, and you pay it, let's say you pay $87,000. For this, for the giggles, make it easy to say you spent $40,000 every month. And on that particular month, say, month of April, you had $10,000 in claims. So you sent the $40,000, and they take the $10,000 out of the $40,000 you sent. What happens to their $30,000 you sent?
It's their profit.
It's their baby. That's what we call throwaway money. It's just like getting a grain of corn and throwing it out on the ground, okay? So what if we took that money and put it in your bank account? Hmm, wow. We can do that, okay? We can put it in your bank account. It's your reserve account, okay? And we actually will pay claims out of that as well, okay? But you're not paying for, you may have five good years. You know, Bob across the street's having some bad years. Well, that reserve in that you gave the money for them, just free, is helping him over there, okay? Let's stop doing that, okay? Take control of your money, and you can have better care of your healthcare costs. So basically, part two says MERP, TPA. The MERP is the Medical Expense Reimbursement Program. TPA is a third-party administrator. That's who Freedom Claims is. They're the third-party administrator. And they're gonna have administrative fee. You're paying fees today. Yes, they're having administrative fee, okay? In this particular fee, on this particular case, you go down here, it says part two on the bottom here, says $47. There'll be a number for you guys right here, too. Now, 47 is times 73 every month, or whatever that employee was. Whatever number you guys employ is every month, and they'll go like this, because you'll lose some, gain some, whatever. But that's gonna be administrative fee. So then, the claims fund, you go across here, there says $17,000, $77.92. Instead of giving that money to Aetna, or Blue Cross, or United Healthcare, we don't send it to them now. Where that free stuff is going to them, we're gonna put it in your bank account every month, just like clockwork, boom, 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 okay? And this county's got almost a little over $17,000 dropping into their reserve account every month. Then there's a, let's see, you go down here, it says part four, says 15%, okay? And that's where we have a little skin in the game there from a Freedom Claims side of things. So she wants you to have savings. And I say she, it's Julie Yorma's the owner, so I talk to she a lot of it. So she wants you to have savings, okay? We want you to have savings. And if you don't have savings, we don't do anything. We just move forward. So she's gonna take, this particular sample, she's taken 15% of savings out of that reserve account. That's after, each month is a standalone month, okay? If this is April, nothing, January, February, March is added to that April decision how much the percentage is on that, okay? So if you have $1,000 left in there after claims is paid, if there's $1,000 left in there, this particular sample, you'd see it $150 because it's 50%, okay? And there's a one-time fee. This happens to be a $2,000 fee just to set up everything. I don't know what your fee would be, but that's just what this particular county paid. That's all a sudden, get everybody enrolled and all that kind of stuff. So it's just something we've been doing. Yes, sir?
So there would be a lapse in insurance premium. You know, we collect the premium, there wouldn't be any charges for a month, so what is all that money going to the reserves?
That, let's see what you're saying. So...
So let's say you pay your insurance on January 1, and that's when your cover started. The client won't get to anybody probably till February. They may not even get paid till March. So now all that money goes directly into reserves?
That, yeah, that goes in reserve. Yeah, it's your money. Everything you send out to them, that's staying in your account. That's your money.
And then when that, one of those bills actually come out, then you just take it out.
Take it out, yeah.
So your bill goes in reserve.
You betcha.
Right off the get-go.
Yes, yes. Let's see here. So any questions from this page? Okay. I know I wish I would've gotten to you a little sooner. I made a phone call, and if I was gonna be on the dock, I didn't make it down here, and it ended up, but I guess, I guess you're doing it since January 1. That'd be kind of cool, to get an opportunity to quote your boss. So, page three, let's just do away with the histogram, and just go down here at the bottom here, okay? Save you a little time. What this shows is $204,935, okay? This is if nobody gets sick, okay? We know that's not gonna happen, but this is just the ultimate that this group could put in reserves right there. That's how much they would have in reserve. That's that $17,000-some dollars times 12 gives you that number, okay? So in that $30,000, if nobody gets sick, that means Julie got the full 15% of the year, right? Not even gonna get closer to that. We may get half that, because that's half the claims. We may get $15,000 on that deal. So don't look at that being a killer number. It's, it's gonna be driven because of claims. And then they would net out $174,195 is what they would've netted out if nobody got sick, okay? Now, if you go down below there, and it says, in the blue, says 77.42 claimants, there's 160 in this group. It takes 77.42 claimants to actually total up between the employee and employer to that $6,000, okay, between their blue area and the employer. It takes 77.42 out of 160 to break even on this group, okay? Not likely gonna happen. But can it happen? Well, sure, but it's not likely gonna happen. So if that, if it did happen, if it did happen, guys, that 77.42 claimants, times that $22.50, because that would come out of your reserves, would total about around $174,000 right there, which that would wipe out your reserve account, okay? Can it happen? Sure, it can happen, but it's not likely probably gonna happen here, okay? But that just gives you an idea. Any questions at that point? Am I going too fast? The next page, page four, it says, there's a question at the top here. It says, "Answer the question. How many members will have claims over $6,000?" Okay? And this is an actuarial table, put together by the insurance companies, and they're cranking out all kinds of numbers, guys, and they put this together. Total members in the green, 160, and it'll show you how many dollars and the percentage of people that actually hit that, and it tells you actually members. So down below it says, "Over $6,000, 7.14% of a group of 160, which is 11.42 bodies or 12 people," basically. Yep, that's it. Yep, that's it. And just, that's plus or minus. So, say if you had 30, you're still beating 77.42 over here. I mean, that's what the insurance companies will say, and that's what it comes out, they got a ton of numbers cranking that stuff out. It's pretty close. But we would come back and show what your, your numbers would be on that as well, and plug in your stuff in there. So, let's go to, let's skip the next page, that's just stuff to read. Terms, conditions, and you probably wanna read one of these days, but... For the sake of time here, I know you guys are like, probably want me to get out of here.
You're fine, you're doing a good job.
So, page six is two tables under exactly the same. Give me a place out. Well, this particular sample, if you look at it down in the corner, it says 258,750 in this box, and 258,750 here. That is the maximum liability as it pertains to claims excluding fees, okay? And we would be able to show your maximum liability in that particular sequence on that, in those boxes, okay? The top table is if you guys go with a Freedom Choice plan, with a high deductible plan, whether it's Aetna, Blue Cross, or whoever it be, them reserves go into your reserve account, okay? And down here is if you guys decide to spend what, like on that rule, renewal said $87,000, no changes. You just go down here, the maximum liability stays the same, but your reserves are going to the insurance company, okay? So, they get all the gravy, okay? So, how do we get those numbers? Just so that you guys know, just to kinda, it's kinda nice to know, right? So, there's 31 singles, and there's 14, 11, 17, and all have a family orientation, okay? So, that's a total of those 73 employees there on this, on this particular plan. That 31, you multiply that by the number that's important to use, whatever number's in that box right there, okay? Whatever's that gonna be. That, that number, 31, times that, gives that maximum liability, that's 69,750, okay? And there's other three numbers, with the 14, 11, 17, you multiply it by that same number in that box, okay? And you take it times two, 'cause it's family, okay? That's how you get the total of 258,750 as it pertains to claims minus excluding the fees. That percentage there, so 67.32%, they started out, at the get-go, at 67.32% funded on this, on this plan. Really good. Now, the number, the higher the percentage, the better you are, okay? If you're in the 40s and 50s, high 30s probably, but probably 40s, 50s above, it's a good plan to start with, okay? If you're down to 20s, I'd go less, we're not gonna do this this year, let's quote it next year. Let's just see when it hits. I ain't gonna force it down yet, okay? So, we're gonna see, well, if it comes back and it's 20, you guys say, "Hey, we can do that," okay? So, basically, all I wanted to do today, guys, was share something you've probably never seen before. And there's 26 other counties doing this, and it's 25% of counties in state of hand that's under this. And you got a list of people that you can reach out and talk to, ask the, you guys, people you probably know in these other counties that are doing it, even some of these cities. Reach out and ask them about Freedom Claims. Don't ask about TILA Insurance, I'm the guy behind the scenes. But ask them about Freedom Claims, that's who they work with, and, and we don't pay them for what they're gonna say. I'm telling you, but it's, you guys are gonna love it. If we can just present your numbers and just show it to you. If it's a fit, you'll know it, if it's not, you'll know that, too. It's just simple to that. Yes?
Because I don't know that I've seen it like this, but I need, I wanna make sure I understand it. The total single deductible, $6,000. The employee has a $1,500 deductible.
So, you got a, the $6,000 is the, the county pays for the $6,000 deductible plan, gives you guys your discounts.
Correct. So, the first $1,500 of the claims are gonna go and the employee owes them.
Yes, yes.
Once they meet that, they're gonna have 50% co-insurance.
Yeah, well, whatever you guys, this is on this, this particular sample, it's that way.
So, then, once they, they basically have a second deductible, which is what I call out-of-pocket.
Yeah, the maximum pocket, yeah.
So, they have this second deductible. So, they're gonna pay 50% of their claims, of the allowable's, until they meet this 2250.
Yeah, that's how that works there.
So, when this is finished, then the county would take over at that point.
Yeah, you're the reserve.
And the next deductible we owe.
But that comes out of your reserve account, money you were giving away, okay?
So, when does this 50%? Until this 2250 is met, the county's paying 50% of the allowable's on the claims. And once that 2250 is met by the county, the $6,000 total's met and is 100% covered at that point.
Yes.
What networks are you, Freedom Choice is the network?
Freedom Choice is the third-party administrator. We work with Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, the major brands you hear out there, we team up with them. They're still in the game. So, you would pay, you would pay still Blue Cross Blue Shield a premium every month, but you're gonna pay $19,000, well, this particular case, like $19,000 difference, okay? You're not sending that extra money, you're putting it in reserve. You pay for that high deductible plan, which is like $20,000 cheaper. So, you've still got that bill. You're gonna pay administrative fee to Freedom Claims, and then it's just the percent savings, and that's gonna go like this, and that's two months in the rear, and that works on that, so...
So, basically, what you're saying is out of 102 employees, so 60 employees aren't making it, you know, 40 or more, those, you're gonna...
Your reserves. Yes, there's...
Which is probably happening, because you got...
All the time.
Right.
You'd be amazed if these guys come out and say, "I'm amazed, how many people don't use their deductible? How many people don't even go to the, go to the doctor?" And that money, you've already sent off and given to them. So, you can put that back in your reserves. And you think about the holistic approach, okay? This is your money in the county, okay? This is your money. Instead of giving it away frivolously, not really knowing that. Okay, so you keep it, okay? And it builds up, so maybe you guys got this number. We wanna get you to 125% funds, is where our first goal is. Because you wanna enhance these benefits for the employees. You wanna, you wanna keep people here working. You can have better benefits, may keep them going to somewhere else, okay? From a holistic approach, and you guys dictate this every year. And if you have the funds in there and you build up a reserve, instead of, say, an example, $1,500 deductible, you drop it to $1,000. You can do that, but now your hands are tied, 'cause you can't. I heard you guys talk. So, it gives you flexibility to be able to look at things and be able to do something different that you've probably never heard of before. The only thing they're gonna see, now, the major thing they're gonna see, okay? They're gonna carry two cards. And it's gonna be the umbrella carrier, which is Blue Cross or Aetna, whoever you guys go with, okay? And Freedom Claims card. As you go to the service provider, you give them both cards. We actually go out to all your pharmacies you guys use, and some of the hospitals or whatever you guys are using locally here, and we'll tell them, hey, the county has met with the two-card system, and we show you how all that works. Guys, it's really, it's pretty simple. Some people get hung up on the two cards, and they're like, "I don't wanna carry two cards." I always say, you know, when you get older, you're gonna carry four or five of them anyway. So, it's, it's no big deal.
So, are the claims going to Freedom Choice, or the claims are being submitted to Blue Cross?
It's, Freedom Choice has taken care of all that.
Are you repricing it? I'm, I'm missing the, I'm...
They're not charging you, they're not...
I'm missing the middleman here.
Yes.
What would be different than us just getting a $6,000 or $12,000 plan with Blue Cross?
Because you're not gonna be able to, that money is gonna go, go to them, you're not gonna build, build reserves doing that, okay? And this here, they, they're doing all the work for the employee with that third-party administrator, administering the employee claims, and once it's fixed out, that's on Blue Cross.
This is actually a self-funded plan. I know the numbers on the self-funded plan, instead of them giving...
Well, it's, it's a fully funded plan. Yes, it smells like a partially self-funded, but it's fully funded. So, if you go, if you think of a partially self-funded or self-funded plan, guys, there's a lot of risk in that. And here it is. So, you got a family of five going down the street, okay? Five of those people, they get in an accident, okay? And they're in the hospital, and they're racking some big numbers, okay? And you're on a partially self-funded or self-funded plan, you have, you guys gotta carry a specific deductible, and that could be anywhere from $20,000 to $50,000 per person, per person. Okay, there's, there's $250,000 right there, boom. And right here, $12,000 per family. So, where's the risk? You're gonna $250,000, turn 50, $12,000 on the counter, boom. It's a no-brainer. It's like, guys, where's this been on my mind? Seriously. I mean, if I was seeing this back when I worked in lubrication engineers for 30-some years, I would, we should've been doing this a long time, I never heard about it.
So, do the providers have to be in network provider with Freedom Choice?
No, it's all your, it's all, it's, you'll have the, you'll have the same network, take Blue Cross, if you had a single, if you had a Blue Cross network, which you need to have, but if you did, that network wouldn't change. If you guys went with that, that network wouldn't change. So, you still have all the benefits of, unless you're like on, some people are on like a grandfather clause on Blue Cross. You've heard that, there is some slight changes to that. But that pool's getting shrunk, there's a lot of people coming off of it, and over, every year, that's, that pool's getting smaller and smaller in that group. And so, their claims are figured out on, it's not the whole mass. So, I've learned a lot in the last year and a half, two years doing this. I'm not, I don't know everything, but I get excited about being able to help something, help you guys see something different that you haven't seen before, that actually, let's see if it is a fit or not. I think that's it, guys. So, I guess, will you allow me to at least quote this year for, you know, I don't know when you guys...
That was the next, I figured that was his next question, is if he wants... What'd we say to the other group, September, August, what'd we say?
August, September. It was...
Are you gonna need claims data, and you have to do a census?
Yeah, we would do, we would send an email out. I would send an email to Jennifer Pickering, she's the COO of Freedom Claims, and I would copy whoever it needs to be copied here. And I would say, "Hey, could you send them the old information to be able to quote your business?" And it comes back and sends a list of everything we would need from us, and you know exactly what's needed. And you need, you know it in advance. Now, the only thing we can get early is your renewal. We have to wait for that. So, when the renewal comes out, then we can finish it, but we have all the other stuff taken care of and just sitting there waiting, you know? Just kinda beehive, if you will.
Yeah.
But that's what we'd be waiting on your renewal. And then after you get the renewal, then we actually will run it out to all the different carriers, you know? So, there's gonna be a little lag there, too, to get the information back from the carriers, especially at that time of year, you know? You're, you're, especially if you're going to January 1, there's a lot of people doing January 1s, so it's, it's a, it's a big headache. But we work through all that over, every year. But then, so you get that information, there is a, in that information you get, you'll receive a, a form in there from Blue Cross to allow us to work in your behalf, you have to sign it, doesn't commit you to anything. It allows us to go out to Blue Cross and get information and stuff like that, so... It's pretty simple. Most of the work we can do is, we can do quite a bit if you sign that type of agreement there. But then, we, we don't charge for this, for us to go do that either, so...
Cool.
Okay. I think it only took about 30 minutes, didn't it?
It did. You did better than I did.
Well, I, so who do I need to send that email to?
I would copy the clerk's office, yeah, we'll start there. We'll send it to, actually, can you, do you have her business card or anything yet, Michelle? Or maybe you just write down Michelle's email address and give it to there? Yeah, and then start there, send it all to the clerk, and then we can disperse to wherever it needs to be. Because we'll have Stephanie involved as well.
Well, thanks, guys, and sorry that, well, I guess not sorry.
You did.
I provided, it's gonna be great for you.
You did, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Ryan, I know you got work to do, why don't you come on up? Since you're the other time, and you're on here.
Heather, Stephanie said she'd kind of talked to you this morning about that.
I did, yes, it is full-time.
Okay.
Like, for some reason, I was just like, how would it be? It is full-time, but it has to be over 24 hours a week, right?
Okay.
To, there's a, there's a 24 to 37, 24 to 37 hours weekly, is like this part-time benefit, so...
Yeah, this, this one's like totally different from that deal. This is how, how it kinda set up when they first started doing the scale house.
Well, I know that was grandfathered for previous employee, but I think that information fits in our current part-time. But we need to make sure it fits in that, but it is 24 hours is that. That's why I was asking how many hours it is.
Yeah.
We thought it was 25.
They do seven a day.
Seven a day.
So, I would just wanna make sure that, yeah.
If it's seven hours a day for five days, that's definitely...
Yeah, they, they come in, uh, what's it, Wednesday, Monday?
You said full-time insurance?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, they're off Sunday. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then the other person comes in on Thursday.
So, they work three days a week? Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Yeah, and then they work Monday, Tuesday again.
Oh, then they're off Sunday, and then...
Yeah, and the next person alternates in, is how it works, Les.
Okay, so they got five days a week, seven hours a day?
Yeah. As long as it meets that 24-hour threshold weekly, then it's fine, and it leaves those part-time benefits.
And there is no, since it's just a seven-hour day, there's no lunch provided. They just kinda get their lunch when they can, because you're right there in the scale house, so... When they set that position up in the past, they tried to make it look a little better by offering the insurance, the healthcare. Or you probably wouldn't find anybody that would agree to those, those hours, just because you're only, you're only getting around 100 a month anyways, so... And plus, with the alternating days, the way you slide it in there, you know, you're not paying overtime for the Saturdays. So, there's that, that savings of that, so...
What's the total hours the scale house is open?
Right around 100, unless they, we've allowed them to trade days, if they have something come up, what?
What's the, what's the hours the scale house is open daily?
Yeah, because if you got 35 hours a day... It is open from...
Right, times four weeks, it's about 140.
They go out at 8, 8 to 4:30, so...
And that's...
8:30 to 4:30. And that's what the operator does, because they're doing the bookwork and stuff.
And that's Monday to Saturday? Monday to Saturday, the scale house open for people to come and use the...
Yeah. Saturday was the same hours? 8:40?
Yeah. 8:30, I think. 8:30 is actually when the operator starts scale house.
So, there's seven, so each week, there's six hours, so there's 42 hours a week, that's about. For them to work between two. Is that right?
I believe so.
Right off the... Am I saying that right? And we had the other, other part of want to go over maybe some of the recycling, having, reaching out to the communities, possibly. Yeah, I know you said that you guys would be willing to...
Yeah, did you, did you call the insurance company and see what they thought on liability?
Christine said it was on a grant thing, and then even some of the stuff was purchased through, like the pods that Osage use. They're purchased county, Osage City. So, it, it wouldn't be an issue, she said.
Okay, very good.
Is that dealing with maybe seeing happen that the cities will bring the trailers in?
There's some cities that don't have enough people, I don't think, to bring them in. But if we could still cut down, you know, Osage, Fred's willing to work with us, Les is willing to work with us. Still need to reach out to like Oprah Bridge and see if they're willing. And that's gonna cut gas, a person driving to...
Yeah, I think for London, they'll do it.
I think London would.
You think for London? You are, yeah.
So, so...[1640.04]
Are there any improvement with the vendors who pick it up, like is the frequency any better, or is it still lagging behind?
They came and got all that, so all I have to do is when I notice that I start having a full load, I can call them. And I'll see what his timeframe is to figure that out.
Are they buying everything that's being recycled, or some stuff they're not buying, some stuff they're just having dumped?
Some stuff is just going, um, we took a recycled trailer up the other day. Again, we had to take one of them.
Somebody asked me if they're being dumped at the transfer station, because someone said they thought they saw one being dumped.
There is, like the payers and stuff, that we don't have a way to get them where they need to be, some of that was, yeah. Just because it, waste management was charging us so much, much we were up to Kansas City, all the money there, so. But the cardboard, aluminum, tin, glass.
That's all being picked up?
That's all still being accepted, so, um, tires. There's a charge for that, but we still pay for that just to get tires, um, it was keeping them off the roadways and stuff.
Yeah. So I will make sure I visit with the council, the Birmingham on this, just go find them and see what they, how they feel. I don't foresee any issues, but I want to visit them for sure, and then I'll let you know. And then, you had three new hires recently?
Yes.
How's that going?
Good, good, one started Friday, um, one started a couple of weeks ago. Just one more, I think, I think, but, well, maybe one, one didn't, one didn't start.
Oh, okay.
One starts today, then?
One starts today.
What's that?
Ms. Stack.
Oh, um, she started Friday, so she'll, she'll come in today, yeah, she'll come and see her today, so. So, and, and then, yes, we did have a third, because he was a rehire.
Yeah, rehire, yeah. So then, how many positions are you still down?
We're still down at Roadbridge. We're still eight, full-time.
And then, on the train, the trainer, did we get that all figured out? No. That's a tough one.
Yeah.
Information they provided, it didn't, this wasn't, wouldn't work for us, or?
Um, Derek was looking over it.
Okay, I know you've been busy, I know.
Oh, is that CBL training?
Yeah, that's the ELDT. If you're on the driver's training.
Did I ever forward that to you?
I don't think so.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
That would be on me.
That's all right.
It was like, I thought I did, but the one I sent, uh, the first one I sent to Derek, I actually didn't take the attachments with me, so I had to send that one to you.
Yeah.
I gotta send that back out here in just a little bit.
Yep, you send her out.
So, yeah.
Good.
So we're still, um, we still have people coming in, picking up applications and stuff, so, um, we're still filling them out, so. Met with somebody that is interested in the scale house position. I wasn't able to meet them here, but with their hours, I just went and met them at their work the other day and talked to them. So they were gonna talk to their boss and see if their hours coincide with that, so. Kind of see if they could work out a schedule, so.
Cool.
Her other job starts at four, um, in the evenings, and that would get off at four, so if there's a little bit of time where other place could slide in, they were very interested in it, so hopefully get that position filled soon. And get back to mowing and everything else, and pulling people out to slide over and be like, I know we're shorthanded, but we're gonna pull people out of our regular workforce, so.
Right.
Um, we're getting very close to the dust control, I believe, so I got people delivering flags today.
Did they not come prior?
Um, that was, that was the hall route.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, they did finally do that.
Again, off again, off again.
Four, four times.
Wow.
Um, that started at six in the morning, um, with the phone calls saying, hey, we're not bringing you dust control today. Me calling someone else saying, what's up, I already got somebody out there blading the road at five AM.
Yeah.
Not to mention with Father's Day coming up, that would have made that road super dusty and all.
Right.
Long, so, but we did get it, um, they started around noon. Noon or twelve-thirty, and they finished up around a little bit before two, with that all gone, so, done.
Very good.
That's about it.
Good.
I was out by the bridge on Hundred Twenty-Fifth, I put carbon down.
Uh-huh.
And that one starts in the fall, they'll be back?
Yeah, fall, fall.
There's still the sign that says road closed.
Yeah.
My husband's like, but look close, I'm like, it's closed, it's closed, keep on driving, I'm like, oh, this is bad.
Yeah, yeah, I, uh, about two or three weeks ago, I talked to Matt, but he's the project manager for that. And they were supposed to have a meeting to see if they had a window of when they're working on that other bridge, if they can come down and do the one up by Birmingham, and that one, get it started again. And he hasn't held back.
So all the utilities on the north side is what had to be moved?
Yeah, there's actually a fiber on the south side that was moved, too. So, but that's what held that whole project up was AT&amp;T not coming out and moving that stuff.
And so is a similar bridge going back in, or is it different type?
It'll be different, yeah. It'll be a box bridge going back in that one.
And how long will it be closed when they get started?
Um, once they start, they only have seventy days. Yeah, to do that, um, the last one that was done up by Barclay area, I think they completed that one in forty-eight days, forty-nine days.
Okay.
Yeah. And it was a very large one, so.
And then a perfect one, or a rain day, or.
Yeah, which is, yeah, so, I mean, that, that was way ahead of schedule.
Yeah. What about our dip on Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street, I know, keep beating you up about it.
I haven't heard that one yet, yeah.
Never where the culvert, that's settled, above that culvert?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that one is getting closer, where we can get that cut in. Because we had another couple, we had a one up on Nessel Base Road that fell in.
Yeah.
So that one comes in tomorrow, I ordered that. Um, we have this one out here by Sturdy's on West Sixth Street, that road's falling in. So had to turn around and order that culvert, so.
Is that where it was ordered up, that township up there on the one?
Uh, yeah, I guess we do own that stretch right down to that bridge, so, yeah, it was, it's hard up there, I was like, ah. Uh, Two Hundred Fifth Street. Yeah, we own up to the Nessel Base, where that blacktop is, then we own that half-mile going back to the east, and that's where we cut off. That's right where the culvert is.
Right, nice.
So it's ours, so, I hadn't got it ordered, and it'll be in tomorrow, so, we found that. Think we closed that, not last Friday, but the Friday before, so we already, I called them, found one, and we'll be able to put it in this week.
Cool. Cool. Have your chance you get.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Ryan. Land development, you've been very patient.
Don't, don't worry, I cheered Greg up for you guys.
You did? Greg was sad?
I gave him some brown red ice cream, he's good to go.
You're very enough for all of us.
No, I did not, my kids eat that stuff so fast.
Is this on all those green hot?
No, because I didn't get them at the auction. Okay, so I have three things, well, four actually, but I'll be quick, because it's already been a long morning. Um, this is a fireworks display, John Sharp is the applicant, um, from Lamont Hill, um, they do it every year, it's so, it's July second with a rain date of July the third.
This is actually the show?
The show, yeah, so not the fireworks stand, the actual show.
Do we review that at all?
No, I'm.
Okay, you need to review that? Uh, I will move to approve the special event application for fireworks display for John Sharp.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
Should be on the second. Under the map, on the bottom.
Well, somebody already signed it for me, do you want me to break the line?
The printer just printed all wonky, like, look how little this one is.
Look at this.
Look at this one, and look how this one printed, it's just weird. I don't know what's going on, but. And then I have a second one, that John Sharp is the applicant on, and this one is at Chris Wells's house. Date of event is July the eighth with a rain date of July the ninth. And it's all of these signed by emergency management, the sheriff himself, and EMS.
Very good.
Do you need to review that? I will move to approve, excuse me, special event application for family fireworks show for Chris Wells. Motion's been made in second, and all in favor? I oppose, motion carries.
And the third thing is the Shidley Road Vacation, we had a planning and zoning hearing on May the thirtieth. Um, they approved, agreed to, recommended to approve it. Um, all the legal documents are attached to your packets. It was actually probably the easiest planning and zoning board meeting I've had thus far. Um, because all the documentation was already taken care of by landowners and everybody involved, et cetera, prior.
So is it a resolution, or what is it?
Yeah, I have the, I have the original, I have the official resolution here. I just need Les and Michelle's signature on the actual resolution, depending on what the motion is.
And it's just this here to here? This is the road?
Yeah, I think so.
So the property line stays the same, they're just taking, it's no longer a road?
Yeah, so, generations back, created a road. The Carnahan Place Road, and they're just, and all the landowner, it doesn't land lock anybody or anything like that. Yeah, it's legit, yeah, well, family does, not just one person, but yeah, so everybody within a thousand feet is agreed, and like I said, it was probably the less stressful planning and zoning hearing I've had thus far in six months.
And what did the planning and zoning board say?
They recommended to approve this.
Give me out or something.
Mm-hmm. And I currently only have one interest in the planning and zoning board opening position.
Is that not until July fourteenth?
Mm-hmm, it's in the paper till July fifteenth, I think. I haven't got a letter, I just got a phone call, told him I had to have a letter.
I received a phone call and they're sending out.
Yeah, I can maybe write up a little post and try to, I hadn't shared it, I did see it in the paper, maybe I'm trying to.
It's on the website, too, it's in the paper and on the county website.
What page on the campus is that?
I have no idea.
Okay, maybe I'll do a link to it or something. I'll just try to think of people who've been really active.
And here, here's the resolution.
I will move to approve vacation order in case number VAC two-three-zero-one. The vacation of all of Carnahan Place Street right of way as dedicated, excuse me, in the Shidley subdivision of Sichet County, Kansas. Motion's been made in second, and all in favor? I oppose, motion carries. You don't need anything in there, the zoning documents, just the resolution sign, correct?
Do you want the packet?
Hmm?
For your law, do you want the packet? I don't need it.
We'll just file it with the clerk.
Well, I have to file the resolution.
Okay, yeah, I don't need it.
This being said, I feel, um, the lack of, I, I'm I feel like I earn, my pay is fair, so this is not a self thing here. Um, I feel like the pay scale, the job descriptions, the no rhyme or reason to giving pay causes a lot of animosity in this building to work in every day, and I no longer want to work here.
Do you want to tell the lady, or you want us to?
Truly up to him, I do not care.
You have any issues with me reading this out loud?
I do not care, it's totally up to you.
Okay, for the record, Osage County Commissioners, June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three, dear Osage County Commissioners, excuse me, Les Holman, Jay Bailey, Heather Cooter. Please let this letter serve as notification of my resignation as the Land Development Director for Osage County. My last day of employment will be June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. I do understand that this puts considerable strain on you to find a suitable replacement for my position, and the taxpayers are the ones who pay the price. I can no longer work under the conditions created in this county. I'm done watching my coworkers who have put in five, ten, or even twenty more years continue to not be appreciated. This shows when someone who has been here a matter of months is making more money. You don't pay people for the longevity and their dedication, you will soon have no one here with any experience. Over the last year I have worked here, all we talk about is change, and nothing changes. While some people worry more about the budget instead of what services we provide for our taxpayers, there's a problem. There is no camaraderie in the courthouse whatsoever. Everything is a competition, a competition instead of a team mentality. We should all be lifting each other up, not tearing each other down. I watched what certain people did to Rhonda Beats, who had devoted herself to this county. This was unnecessary. Yet we have commissioners who do not defend Rhonda, yet defend other elected officials with no validity. I personally get along with all the department heads and have no personal issues with any of them. However, I am tired of the public complaining over and over about things, and nothing gets resolved. I would like to thank the people that have supported me without being prompted. I would like to thank the Planning and Zoning Board for their support and the time that they have spent in the last year on all the issues. The relationship that I have formed due to this position with the public and some coworkers will be lifelong. Thank you, Melissa Kraus.
I all I'm gonna say right now is, uh, thank you for what you've done, uh, for the county.
Aye.
Excuse me. This kind of hits a little bit more, just because people are starting to really speak out about a lot of the things that I've noticed when I took over in this position. And not to publicly attack people, because I don't like to do that, I don't like personal attack, um.
That is nothing personal.
No, it's not, and I'm not saying that you're doing that, I say, I think you have outlined this very well, we do have big issues at this county.
I, I, I feel like the quote-unquote competition mentality starts with the pay. I, I really honestly do, and then everybody's always worried about so-and-so getting a raise, or how much do you make, or how much did they make? And it, and there is no reward for, I'm a taxpayer as well, and I feel like, I want people, I mean, I remember being a kid in this county, and it was a big deal if you worked at the courthouse, like, everybody wanted to work here. It was local, they had good benefits, the hours were great if you had kids in school. We, I, I feel as, like I've only put in a year, almost a year, a couple of weeks shy. Um, but there are people that have put in five, and ten, and twenty years, that are not getting compensated for that, and they have the knowledge that our taxpayers need. And, and that's where I'm kind of, I've accepted a position elsewhere, um, because I'm not happy here, or I would have stayed.
I'm not gonna make a motion to accept a resignation, someone else is.
Are you gonna take me to my desk?
Someone else is gonna have to do it.
I know, totally. She, Melissa reached out probably forty-five, sixty days ago.
Mm-hmm, when I started applying for jobs.
And I said, give it time, it takes time for us to get through some of the issues we've gone through, but you have time, it's a process, but.
Well, and I was transparent.
The problem with government is a very, very slow process, I mean, I don't, that's one thing I have learned, is as a business owner, I can make a decision in two seconds and change it. As a county commissioner, it doesn't.
No, and I understand that all of these issues are even in your guys' control, I get that, I, I think it starts with the department heads asking for raises for their employees, I know that that's the process, but I'm not saying I agree with the process.
I think I've been pretty vocal on that part myself, so I haven't been going for that, but, uh, I don't want to see it down here. I don't know who's.
I appreciate all of your support, and I.
Who's gonna make the motion, but I might make the motion, so. So yes, I will, we have a.
You're my last resort, I, I've known this was coming for a little while, and you know, I've been here multiple times. And I, and I, I will tell you that I have been transparent through all of this, so you all knew it was coming, we just didn't know when. Um, I, I would like to get somebody in this position as soon as possible, so I can spend as much time with them as possible, I will be out of the state at the end of this week, but, um, I will help anybody, whether it be by phone or whatever, if it doesn't, if it takes a while.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you for every, thank you, thank you for everything you've done.
Did we, did we, yes, then?
We did. But it's from county clerks. I usually handle that under that. C O F, county clerk has paperwork to present request. Do you have that?
He's not serving budgetary.
It's just something.
Oh, or did this, they came the other day?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay, so it's just something.
Right.
Okay, so is there, okay. Is there copies for each of those?
Well, we asked for some information, or you asked for some information, but I'm not sure. Maybe that's it. Is that what it is?
Yeah, it has their consolidated statement of financial position.
So I think we're holding it out.
With their whole designation. Yeah, it's got the financial.
Scott, what you got?
Right.
I'll get the date right when we do this.
Twenty-eight.
Shay? Jay Bailey, ATM.
Yes, I had a local bank reach out.
Hold on a second. We just shed something.
Well, that's not under C O F.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. Who wants to wait? You wanna wait on this?
Yes. No, we're sticking with.
What would you like me to do with this? That's the financial though.
We need to get copies, so we all have.
Yeah, we'll just here at the end. Don't make copies right now. We'll do it here at the end.
So it's reached out by local bank. It says, what's the possibility of living state bank putting an ATM in the courthouse? It'll be a small standalone that runs on hundred-ten volt. Requires a ten-hour trip. We can pass that up and out or, or a first transaction, not signed written terms. So the question is, an ATM in the courthouse, is there a need? And since we have all the other payment stuff, I mean, do we want to look at that? I'm having that. I guess this will push, you know, the rub app with all the department heads in there.
The only, the only cost of the county being utility cost, correct?
Right, and there was a fee structure that whatever it is, something that like the grocery stores have them.
Right.
They really have.
I think it's a good idea.
They don't have tech.
Well, not all, not all departments are doing debit credit yet, right? So some would be, I think it would be very.
And probably the ideal place you're gonna put them, you got security, right there, there's a camera there, everything, so you don't have to worry about too much.
I would say I'm in support of entertaining this and getting more information where we could put it, yada, yada, yada.
That's what I was gonna ask. And then do we open it up to any bank in the county that has an interest and that can all talk about it?
Probably because it's a financial benefit to them, so it's involved fees.
Mm-hmm. So that's all I want to do is get the topic wound up, and immediately I'll reach out to Richard, and I should probably reach out to Citizen of the two, so back to Council.
And our banking account.
Yeah, our banking account.
Probably just put out a letter.
Yeah, send them a letter, request for information.
Send out a letter requesting, uh, the possibility of setting up an ATM and, uh, in the courthouse. I just want to get it on, or that's good enough.
Could use that a couple of years ago. Okay, now, county clerk, update signatures on capers, okay?
Didn't send any paperwork, but we did take your resume down, so.
Oh, you did?
Yes, we made her definitely.
Okay, very good. Carwood Head reports.
Ooh, missing. It's Matt.
Matt. Who'd like to start? Chris? You haven't been in here for very long.
Hello. How many seconds am I here, though?
You need to come up, please. And I say that with the most respect.
Can we see if Matt, Jackie, and.
Not just Kevin.
No, because he's now a director, so he will be coming now.
Right.
Who else?
Luke Richer.
Ryan, sorry, Ben.
Well, it says report. It isn't just a, we have a head of department.
Well, it's a department meeting. Yeah.
Yeah.
Jackie.
Frank was here. It said reports. If she did know it was a department meeting.
Yeah.
If he's in there, see if he's available, and then.
Um, this weekend we had a media column fiber went down that disrupted our services greatly.
Mine, too.
Yeah. Right. Uh, I think it affected Osage City, London. It affected our nine-one-one. We couldn't run tags or any of that, which was kind of a pain. Uh, it's up, obviously, now. I think it was up sometime this morning.
Yeah, we got the emergency located.
I seen the picture. They have, one of the guys that was at Osage was on the text. They were burning the fire, and literally caught the.
The pedestal?
The pedestal on fire, burning the wire, and underneath the, like, just the whole guy.
Actually caught the fiber of the fire.
Right.
Melted it.
Melted it altogether.
I have an issue with insurance that I'd like to talk later about privately. An employee didn't, can't get his insulin. They're not covering it. It's a thousand dollars alone.
So is this a non-elected personnel exception that would be a executive decision?
Yes, sometimes.
Ten minutes?
Just move. Yeah, whatever. It won't take long. We can do that later, too.
Yeah.
Um, creating a mission statement for Sheriff's Office, something that I didn't know, I've never been done.
I just figured you were looking somewhere else.
I've had some, a little bit of overtime this, this week, uh, just because of the case that occurred. It's nothing major. Uh, we also have grant work coming up, which will be KDOT funded, so it'll be overtime for deputies that will be paid for by grant. Also, we'll pay for a dispatcher.
Senator Garret Stier, the state leader, would you, uh, not only favor the citizens of Osage County, tell us what's changed in the state of Carwood Head in the last two weeks? And I'm going to, it's unhappy. So you gotta hold it.
Actually have it somewhere over here.
I didn't think it was bothering.
No, I, I have it somewhere in the mirror. I have no idea. Oh, I'll give you a brief rundown. Um, in two thousand twenty, we brought the canine back. Uh, we're actually working on getting another canine. I'll be bringing that to you pretty soon. Uh, we're gonna use asset from monetary money to do that, so it'll be paid for, not by taxpayers, but by seizures and stuff like that, from drug, drug money and stuff like that. We've increased the pay. As you guys know, we started that in two thousand twenty as well, um, with the old county commission, and I mean, I think we're a lot better than we were when I started. So, I mean, it feels like we're doing better on that. Uh, we joined Internet, trends against children. It's, uh, called ITEC. We joined that in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we've gotten forty-five thousand dollars worth of, um, equipment from KDOT through grants. Uh, it's all free, uh, free. It's through grants, the KDOT, so it's, you know. They've been trying to get us, prior to this administration, they've been trying to get Osage County involved in, in their grants, uh, which never have. Now we're actually going, it pays, it does lots of things. It gives overtime for deputies that does not cost the taxpayers of Osage County to pay them. Uh, and it gives us free equipment every year. Let's see. Sorry, give me just one second. Uh, we've done mandatory mental health training. Um, a couple of things I campaigned on was, again, the canine. We brought back the interdiction for, um, parconics investigations, so we've started that. We actually have three investigators back there, and they're, as you can see by Facebook, they're doing, uh, what I believe is a really good job. Um, we've given training to all the departments around, fire department and P Ds, to help build that relationship. I believe we have really good relationships with most of the P Ds at this point. Um, and we're trying to better that, obviously. We opened our Facebook account so that we can show people what we're doing. I promised transparency when I ran for chair. Um, I promised that we would try to fix the building. Obviously, we're all trying to get through that. Um, also, updated technology. Our radio system was horrible. Uh, it should have been fixed sixteen years ago, fifteen years ago. Luckily, it's now getting them, um, thanks to the work practitioners. Uh, we expanded the S R O program into two more schools. Uh, we also helped pay for that by putting them on light patrol to help fund the new S R Os and the current S R Os. Sorry, just kind of going over the top of it. Uh, we started there, which is another thing I promised when I ran for chair. Uh, we brought that into the schools now. Um, created and made mandatory uniforms so that we're all, we all look the same. Didn't want to just buy a whole bunch of uniforms, so basically we're trying to outfit them as the vests become outdated. Vests have a job life. When those are, we have, we have to, you know, fix that. So every time we buy new vests, we update the, the uniform as well. Otherwise, it's not just, uh, S R T team, I promised to fix that. We dismantled it day one when I took office. Now everyone on the S R T team has been trained exactly the same through an extensive class through K B I. Uh, so we got that up and running. We got a vehicle for them, which before, I don't know if you knew or not, they were in a little Brent van that went fifty-five miles an hour.
It's at that.
Rather embarrassing. Um, we got that fixed. We got a van that's a little more updated. I don't know how, like, just gonna see if you want me to get a version of that.
I just wanted to have the, had the chance to say that, because I think a lot of people see the next person, see what's going on, and they watch Facebook, and there's a lot of stuff. They don't understand everything else that goes online and saying, we see the rest, and all it's doing is just seeing, uh, so yeah, I think I'll probably ask every department head today that has answered questions, so.
Another thing we.
That are too, so.
I know, I hate tooting my horn. I, I do hate this part, but, I mean, I am proud of some of the stuff that we're doing. I mean, we've done the fishing derby every year. That's a great, you know, event to bring children and law enforcement together, to build relationships, and we've built, I mean, I have to see the same kids every year, and it's, it's awesome. It's awesome to be able to interact with them. Um, it's on our Facebook page, I think, the pictures and stuff. I think they have a great time. Uh, we hit every parade. We hit every, every event we get notified of, we're there. Uh, we do a lot of touch tracks. We do a lot of, you know, to me, we have to build that relationship with the community and let them know that we work for them. I, I work for the citizens of Osage County. And I, I take pride in that. You know, I, I want to work for citizens of Osage County, so I want to do the best job again. We have a lot of really good, um, I'm sorry, I jumped right back into instructors. We've had, uh, we've brought some of the, a lot of the deputies and sergeants to become instructors and things that, so now we don't have to pay to go to this training. We actually can train in our department. Wouldn't share that with the, the surrounding cities. Um, examples, you know, we have radar certifications. Uh, we can actually now certify on radars, which that costs every, every city, you know, so much a year. There's, there's so much training that we do. Um, you guys, you know, helped bring the use of work simulator to Osage County, which is huge. I mean, that saves us bullets. That saves us, you know, training, and they can go, not a lot's going on, they can go practice. So there's lots more. I know I'm missing a lot of it, but. Uh, we brought in Deputy County Coroner. Um, she's doing an amazing job. Uh, we don't have to wait now on scenes for extended periods of time. Uh, I know the other, our regular coroner, he's busy. He does multiple jurisdictions, so, stuff like that. I know I'm missing a lot, but this is much tooting than I can do. I don't know if you also want to do, I have personal, personal, are we gonna wait till later?
Uh, no, we can probably handle them right now. It's Steve's department, we could probably.
I don't know if you want me to read the mission statement, or if you want to read it, and I don't know what you think.
I'd think you need to read it. You wrote it.
Okay. Or you, or like, it is a mission of the Osage County Sheriff's Office to proactively serve, protect, and defend the citizens of Osage County without prejudice or favor. We will protect the rights, liberties, and freedoms guaranteed by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas. We strive to cultivate a healthy, safe, and welcoming community through exceptional public service, exceptional partnerships, and dedicated employees while treating the community with respect, attacking professionals in all times.
Very good.
You gonna add that to your website?
We have already.
Oh, good. They were in a different department or something. Vivian, her name sounds familiar. Was she in a different department?
I don't think so.
She had worked with the.
Attention.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, I didn't remember.
Um, I will make a motion to accept the salary change from seventeen eighty-eight per hour to eighteen thirteen per hour for merit increase for Vivian Stanley in the jail. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Ayes, opposed? Motion carries.
And this is within our salary.
Yes, this is just the year of bump up for.
I will also move to accept the resignations of Vincent Stark and Cameron Murray. Seven. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Ayes, opposed? Motion carries.
We have posted the deputy position also. We just posted the deputy position, uh, this weekend, so I'll let you know when we find some.
All right. Thanks, sir.
Any questions?
Okay. Who wants to be next? You guys have been waiting patiently.
I just wanted to say, I've been hit and miss in the office, and I'm sorry about that, but my husband has, has been very ill. And if anybody, I'm not going for raises, but if anybody deserves raises, it's my girls. They have done excellent. And I, I appreciate the raises you guys have given us. And, um, uh, the only thing I have qualms about on, like, wages is somebody coming in and making more than my girls who've been here. I don't think that's right at all. They're trained. They do, they do their job. I brought Barb to talk on what's happening in the office because I, I've been hit and miss. I have come in, like, on weekends and, uh, when I'm coming home from the hospital. And I have one more. I have a question of, uh, Commissioner, uh, Heather Cooter. I was having problems with my computer the other day. This is a while back. I got with C I C. I was shocked to see that she's in my computer under Osage County Commissioners. C I C said, how did, when I said, how did that happen? I said, what, I said, I don't know. You didn't give permission for certain things for her to look at and stuff, and I said, no, I did not. I wasn't asked for her to be in there looking, which I'm supposed to be asked. Then, uh, C I C can, uh, add people, but it's under, uh, certain things that she can get into. I wasn't asked. Who did you ask?
Is it a certain application, or what is it?
Is it a certain application, or what is it?
It's our RMS.
And you've been in it ever since you, just shortly after you took office?
And it is, and we have noticed that. Documents from years ago, before I came on, are now unlocked. When Linda scans them and verifies what we've done, she locks them, excuse me, so nothing can be changed. And now we're finding things that are unlocked.
And we found the computer on sometimes and stuff. I don't know what's going on, I'm just, I don't know if it's something she, she's done, I'm not blaming anybody. What I'm upset about, I wasn't asked. It's not my program, it's the register deeds program. I'm not going to say it's me, but I am supposed to give people permission before they ever get into my program. And it's under the Osage County Commissioners, it says.
What's RMS?
Pardon?
You said, I asked with the application, why'd you say RMS?
It's records management. But there, you know, I have people come in, since Linda's been gone, asking, how safe are our documents?
Yes.
And we tell them that they are not online, we will not allow them to be online. So, I mean, we have it, we have it set up for guests, so people can come in, like researchers and stuff, they have certain computers they can get on, look at the stuff as a guest. You know, we don't want that being out there where somebody could go and get online and then pop something up and see the screen.
That's how a lot of them, that's, they see a signature on the deed, they, they forge signatures, there's been, I will not put my stuff out online, period. If and when that would, would happen, they still have to get a hold of me, and I would have to give them permission to certain things to be able to get into. But CIC, the gal that found that for me, said that they, it didn't look like they had been even asked, so I don't know how, how it happened, how she's on there, but it would have had to been asked me, me permission.
Well, CIC, there's different applications, and so they actually have to load them to do that, so.
I have given the permission for the clerk to get into certain things, I've given permission, then I can go in and mark what can be looked at and what can be, if, I can mark, no, they can't make copies.
So what's on there? You said it's record management system, what's on there? Is it images, or?
It's our whole office procedures and everything, what we do. Mortgages, deed, I mean.
Our deposits and.
Debt certificates and our deposits. That's, that's what I wanted to ask. I mean, I, I'm not aware of any, in fact, any county commissioner being allowed into, I mean, not being allowed, but being hooked that tar, I'd say, in any of the programs, so that, I just didn't know that that was.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And why, why they would be in it.
Yeah.
So, but I wanted to bring that up, because we, we've been having strength, sometimes it's almost like somebody's in there when we're working. And like I said, I brought Barb, but I am coming, I'm gonna try, I'm trying to get back to work, but I've got, my husband has to come first right now.
Yeah.
And I, the girls are excellent, like I said. They've been keeping everything going for me.
We've been trying.
So.
It's, it's been pretty steady. We might have a day that might be a little slower than others, but we've been able to get everything processed from the time we get it that day to the end of the day, to where if it's been something that was mailed, we have it in the mailbox at night. So far, everything's been doing great. We've had a few passports come in, some, some big questions, and then we have to send them to somewhere else. You know, a lot of people come in wanting to want, wanting a deed, or how do I change my name on a deed? Well, you have to go to the title company or your attorney. We just tell them very nicely. And if we have a problem, we will say, we're sorry that we can't help them, but we try our best to help everybody that comes in the door.
Yep, we do.
Even the cranky ones.
And if there's periods, if there should be a period, we're, we can always be busy in there, because if there is a slow period, we're entering, entering old documents into the computer and scanning them, so we're always been.
How many years have you been involved with the registry business?
Forty-one.
So because we don't have that much time, within the past forty-one years, what's changed? And what's the future, or what has the registry been?
Well, we've got, they've gone from on the, putting everything in books to, then they went to copiers, copying the documents. I got the, going with the computer, and, you know, the computer system going. I really, I don't know.
I think that we have a good mix between computers and books. Because we still manually put everybody's legals, you know, the owners and the sellers into the books, because sometimes if the computer's down, we can still go in, as long as they give us a legal description, and go find what we need.
And they can find it through our own books, yeah.
It's kind of interesting, it's unlevelled, so.
Pardon?
If you never went out there and looked up your own deed, or.
Oh, yes. When I first came in and had, you know, was still learning, my best thing is I went and researched my property clear back to the time, it got its patent, so that helped me.
What people don't know, there's several steps to one document. I mean, it's not just do the one thing and it's over.
Right.
But it's a very interesting job.
Yeah, you get to deal with real history.
Yes.
Every day.
History net.
It is very interesting.
Yeah.
And some of the old, old records where an Indian would sign, like bear claw, he drew, he, for his signature is bear, bear claw. It's, it's real interesting.
Some of the older books are harder to read.
Oh, yes.
With all the flowers, flowery writing, but it's good.
Right.
We've gotten more busy, there is some slack, but not much.
Honestly, I thought with the interest rate hikes, that things would slow down, but it hasn't.
It hasn't.
So.
And even with the rising cost of.
Now, next year, during the elections, a lot of times, presidential elections, it does slow down sometimes, it's like, oh, what's going to happen?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Very good. Well, I think part of your question previously, I don't know that Heather'd be in there doing anything fair, is a good question for our attorney, if we're even supposed to have access to that stuff? I wouldn't say why a commissioner wouldn't, but due diligence and.
Well, the gal that was working with me over my problem, she, she told me that, and I'm going, I, nobody had ever, the gal asked me if I'd been asked, and I said, no, give permission, because there has been hackers and stuff, and we just.
Yep. I've had to deal with it myself. Emails got spooked, and sent from me to certain people, I never had a record of the email, so you never know.
Which.
Did you direct a post, and I didn't? I got one from you, if you want to see.
Really?
Very positive.
Yeah, I've been getting a lot of those, like.
I've, I've spoke with a couple IT guys on that, too, so I'll have more information on that, but otherwise, no, that's great.
Wichita has had some trouble with some stuff major. A gal went into a house while the owners, the true owners was out, they were out of state, it seems like.
Yeah, something like that.
And she went in and was like, that was her house. And then, when the owners got back, it was harder on the owners to get that gal out.
It's harder, right?
That's not right.
It's harder, right?
That's just not right. So, and there has been, a prisoner had, had a scheme going with deeds, actually, say, I own my house, and he was making a deed up, like I had sold my house, and they didn't catch it at first, so.
There's always going to be crime.
Had forged signatures and.
You hear that, Miss?
And all that. But that was it, and I want you to know that I am going to try to get back as soon as I can.
You got what you need.
And I've been, I, when Joe took real ill, I was back in the afternoons at least, working, and then he took really bad, so.
Yeah, you take what you need.
Okay.
Have our prayers.
Okay, thank you.
We tell her we got it handled, we'll just keep her back.
And I'm real thankful for my.
Yeah. Thank you. Who wants to go next? Would you like to go next? Yes, Steffi raised her hand, but.
Since we have some of the department's heads in here, I'd like to discuss, I was contacted when Aetna was doing open enrollments, that there is a program that is available to our employees, and it's free for the county, it doesn't cost us anything, doesn't count the, cost the employees anything, and since we have a large number of senior employees, people that are getting close to retirement age, or close to at least being eligible for Medicare, they have a program where they pull the information from Aetna, because they, they partner with Aetna, so Aetna, all the people that enrolled in Aetna, when the employee becomes age sixty-four, they are sent a mailer, and they were also reached out to, by telephone, by this, by this organization. It's called the Medicare Information Assistance. And if anybody in here is on Medicare or is getting close to Medicare, finding information about Medicare and the ins and outs, and how it works, and helping you to make the decision on what programs you need to enroll in, is very, very mind-blowing. I went through recently, and I know, it's really hard to, to find all that information. What they do is they assist our employees, and they don't push one insurance over another. Even though they're associated with Aetna, they don't push Aetna. They go out and they contact each individual person, and if they want to use the program, they can, if they don't, and it's also available to anyone in that household. So if their cousin, their uncle, anybody else can use this program. And they will sit down with that individual, go over their medications, go over what they need, and help them make the best decision for their Medicare choices, but they, one thing that's beneficial is it helps our employees balance, if they're going to continue to work, what plans they should do if they're going to continue with our health insurance and go on Medicare. I'm asking if you have a problem with us signing up for that. Again, it doesn't cost anything, it's an additional benefit, and since we do have a large number of people that are close to that age that work here, I think it might be an additional benefit for our employees.
Yeah.
What do the department heads think?
I'm one of those that.
I know, and when you try to find it, it's confusing, it really is, because you've got Medicare A, you've got Medicare B, you've got all these supplementals, then you need C, and which plan you choose, and they can help, you know, tailor that to your specific needs.
Yeah, I'd say bring it forward to everybody.
And so you're going to ask me?
Absolutely.
It's been one, it's been one year in April, I've been here one year. So what I have done is, I will let you know that one hundred percent of the personnel files for the, every employee in the county is, is digital. There is no paper in my office regarding any employee, since that my, my office is open to the other departments, I have had to come up with something so that nobody has access unless they go into CIC. Also, we have on file job descriptions for all positions in the county. All job postings are on Indeed in the website, which has also increased our number of applicants immensely, so we have a centralized location where people can apply. New employee orientation is completed within three days of their start date, and every employee is personally, we personally go through all of the benefits and the plans and the options for each employee at that time, so they completely understand what their options are for their benefits and understand their benefits. I9s have been audited and are now correctly completed for all employees for the county. Open enrollment has been completed, it was completed today, so we have all of the open enrollment completed. And then also, all of our employee benefit information is now available for our employees on our website, and links to all of our providers, any, the handbook is online, and anything that's pertinent to the employee, so it's trying to make everything as transparent and easily available to employees possible.
That's through the employee portal?
Yes, through the employee portal. And they can log into CIC and get access through the, the employee website by asking for access, so. Plus, I've completed several audits and data requests for the commissioners within that last year, regarding benefits, salaries, position descriptions, et cetera.
Well, you've helped me on a couple of the projects that deal with putting together an Excel spreadsheet or something that's easy to her, that I probably could never do.
I also can.
She did it in a click of, what, an hour, that one day, when I asked her to put together that budget calendar and.
I can do pivot tables if you guys need something like that, too, so. That's, that's all I have.
Very good.
Do you have any questions?
You have any things?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Christine.
As mentioned earlier, the motor vehicle budgets, I had put in a ticket with CIC on June seventh, and I've been trying to navigate working with them. They called again this morning when I was in here earlier, so I really don't feel like I want to take much more time today with anything. In regards to the ATM, it's not been publicly posted, I'm waiting on marketing materials, but we are able to take credit cards and e-checks for all types of transactions in the treasurer's office now, not just taxes. So I'm waiting to get some marketing on that, as well as other departments in the county have gone live with that. And economic development is the next one to follow, to be able to allow those things. But I think an ATM does provide an opportunity, we talked about it months ago, if someone doesn't want to pay the fees that they would be charged through our vendor, they are welcome to come down and use the ATM, and potentially they may not have fees, I don't know, if they bank with them to be able to get the cash, so I think that's another alternative option for people to have that, so I think that's a great idea. And that's what I'm focused on today.
On the e-checks, are those guaranteed, or how do they, does they run the check through, it goes to a different company, right?
The same company, they run them through, but they're pending on our side for seven days while the funds are guaranteed.
Okay.
And it's a flat fee.
So, once the customer gets a receipt, is it guaranteed now, or is it not?
No, seven days from the time we post it.
So the recourse for those, if you was to get a check that went in ago, does e-check handle that, or does the county handle it?
It depends on the reason. If it was a technology type issue with their site, they would, if it's like insufficient funds or the bank closure, we would handle that per usual process. that per usual process.
Um, I just, so, you're dealing with CIC right now?
They called again at nine oh nine.
Right, what about the May tenth, this, uh, information, hold on, I have an email right here that the city's sent to me, it's. Here, I'll just let you read it. There was apparently, uh, per statute, something that was supposed to be sent out by May tenth, and the cities have not received that yet.
It's estimated to be received by the station.
Well, the budget that went out, so there's, the motor vehicle budget comes from my office and the rest of the budget is the clerk. Michelle got those out.
Yes, and then this portion comes from your office, we still don't have that.
That's the motor vehicle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's the one that you're still dealing with CIC on?
Mm-hmm. Yes, the issue.
Well, we're over a month, um, from not having that stuff out to our cities, their taxing entities. And we have to have it to prepare our budgets. Put my other hat on, real quick.
That is correct, um, and it has to do with the way the levies are, from what I understand, because the levies have to be put in, um, for both sides, the clerk and my side, um, I did not want to prepare them and have the information be incorrect, and so I don't know if they're interdependent or not, that's one of my questions to CIC. Um, and then I didn't wanna produce that budget data, so I've had a ticket, CIC is very well aware that they're very lacking in customer service right now, um, because they, at the Treasurers Association, there were a lot of counties not happy with their customer service right now, so, um, not, I'm not putting blame, I'm telling you, I have a ticket in there because I didn't want to do them wrong. They tried to call me yet again this morning, and so I'd like to get back to that, so hopefully that's done today, that was my main goal for today.
Is, I mean, and I was just curious if there's, because that's a state statute, is your office gonna be held non-compliant, or is there, have you gotten any notification from anybody that?
I mean, I've gotten requests.
What's the ramifications of that? You know, like, I don't know either. There's a certain date that's supposed to be out for a reason, I mean, there's a statute set to it, so I'm just curious, I don't wanna, so I don't, whatever I can do to help, I guess, I don't know if there is anything I can do to help, but, I mean, we're over a month now without these, so.
Trying to figure out why.
Yeah.
So I can get them produced.
Maybe call CIC as a commissioner.
Maybe.
And say, we need some assistance, we need to help the treasurer to get this fixed.
Mm-hmm. Maybe. How would they, we did last year, right, so what was different compared to last year, make sure what changed, I guess, like, here's my question, why I'm asking, the ones that asked me weren't even in our county, cause one of those, that one, that one, but.
Yeah, we share a taxing entity.
Right, so the question that was, is for them to figure out whether they're reverend neutral or not, they gotta have those numbers, and the reverend neutral area's gotta be set pretty quick. So, I went and checked with the county clerk before she was up for her training, which the reason she's not every day is cause she's on Elvis training, which is, nobody knows what that is, that's election law and stuff. Um, and she has all of her stuff around, that just has, is required.
Yeah, she just got it out last week.
Right, um, but she's already been here for like two weeks.
Exactly.
So I'm trying to, okay, how does this go for here, we haven't, uh, not.
So last year it was a, for lack of a better word, whirlwind, because it was my first time and we were dealing with a lot of things, so I know CIC helped me through that last year. Um, I don't know if anything's different than last year, um, but I know that I don't want it to go out incorrectly, um, and with the two that need to kind of go together, what the clerk produces and what I produce, I don't, again, I reached out to them to help me to make sure it's done right. There may not be anything wrong, but the levy information that's in there is not current.
Yeah.
Well, what year is it?
Um, it actually goes back two years, and you use that levy rate, and then you have to, it's, it's, I don't wanna do it wrong.
And this one's.
Because you're going.
Quick line out there, though, that's, the clerk's not involved in setting that one, this one comes directly.
No, it's, you have to go to the state and look at the levy rates for like two years prior, and then you have to put in some other information, and I just, again, last year was a whirlwind and I do not wanna do it wrong.
Okay, well, I gotta keep you much longer, so you can get back up there, because this, yeah, this is super important.
Well, and I don't remember.
I wonder if her has the same time, or whether she wants to, it's up there, probably about the last, what, year and a half.
Not right now.
I want her to go fix this, she's, we're a month, over a month behind on these.
Well, and I don't know if this has anything to do with this, but when we periodically were getting those updates from CIC, they had different things that have been down off and on, and one of them was the instant response, so I don't know if that affected their mind, but they, they've had something going on.
We, yeah, and maybe they just don't like Osage County, but that city of Birmingham, we haven't had any issues, we click instance, constantly call us back within hours.
You what? I don't think it's that they don't like Osage.
Yeah, so I don't know, but you are dismissed.
Thanks.
Thank you. You've been here a long time, Greg, won't you come up?
Okay.
I mean, it looks like you're enjoying yourself back there.
Uh, sure.
I figure I need to shake you up a little.
I got a request to create, or get some training for you guys with the ICS, Vince's functionality for, uh, senior officials, also for bringing our department heads in on it, but maybe you guys can't have a meeting without a banal concession. The instructors I've talked to said, that's not a problem, they just call a meeting to order and turn it over to him and let him go. If the public wants to come in and see it, they're more welcome. Uh, we could open it up to, uh, city fathers and have some of them come up and see what's going on also.
So it's a four-hour dose?
It says it's a four-hour, the instructor says generally goes about two and a half, three hours, depending on the questions.
Have you set a date for this yet, or are you just looking for interest?
I'll discuss with you guys first.
Yeah, good.
See what would be a good day for you guys to all be here, be available. And that's just an overview of the class. The instructor I'm working with is, uh, Tika, Emergency Medicant, Shawnee County Insurance Action. He just got done with the class and handover and it's kind of what they did, just open it up to department heads and question.
Whether how, put later, how long, before they want to get this done.
Whoever fit you guys is scheduled with his schedule.
So, Monday afternoon? Yeah, I would, I would think of.
Did you say Monday afternoon?
Yeah, Monday afternoon, like on either July third or seventeenth, cause we have the CUP for Betis on the tenth. I would, most of those guys are not, they're around on Thursday.
Yeah, probably not many.
Right, the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, but they're always. I will get in touch with him and find out and let you all know.
Right on. I know, get some dates in there.
Yep, I'll find out what Monday afternoon is worth, best rate.
Cool.
And to answer your question, continuing on with the process creative home predecessor. Put in grants here and there, just put in one for homeland security and try and get a boat, or a bag boat, an rescue boat, with our two fiddler legs, however many city legs we got, we could get on and we'll take care of it. That's my idea.
Thanks, sir.
No problem, sir.
Who else has been here the longest? Matthew has, or Brian's back.
Ryan's back.
Come on up, man.
I got to sneak away, I got caught. Sweet bragging. Gotta say good morning, but it's almost good afternoon, isn't it?
Right.
How long have you been here now? Here for a year.
One year.
Um, what is they, the nineteenth, yeah, just out of year, so seventeenth of last
year, so. Um, so in the department, what we got going on is summertime, so that means data collection for the appraisers' office, uh, which has kind of been a setback for us with Christine Levenson, the primary data collector, um, and then we have the setback with the employee we hired to take her place, um, we're actively searching for another one, what that means for our office is, uh, I will probably be out of the office quite a bit more this summer doing that, data collecting, um, I'll get Michelle up to speed on data collecting also, we can get two people out there, hopefully, find the good candidate, uh, for it, we'll fill that position, and I'll spend some time getting her trained. And, uh, of course, there's always overview, we got one percent that I have to go out on anybody else that collects data, I have to go out and review one percent of their work, um, that's a state statute. Uh, it's pretty much what we got going on in the office right now. Your question, I'll answer that, what was that question, I didn't hear it till the first one, so I kinda heard different versions of it.
What, what, what have we changed in last year, where we had it?
Oh, so, okay, um, the appraisers' department has changed quite a bit, probably the biggest change that I didn't foresee coming into the office was the mapping, bringing the mapping back in under the appraisers' office. Um, that sounds simple on the face of it, but what that really entails is working well with a vendor, uh, to make sure that the properties are getting updated, and that's where the issue starts in this county. I was surprised at the number of parcels that we had wrong ownership on, we've been cleaning that up through the last year through deeds. It seems like in the past, one person was doing the mapping, doing the property ownership transfers in Orion and in CIC, uh, multiple offices, clerk's office and appraisers' office. During that process, some errors were made over the years, um, and it just happens. Uh, one of the steps that Christine and myself and Rhonda at the time had put in place was that CIC would be changed in the clerk's office, um, appraisers would take care of Orion and the maps, and then we would be able to look when a deed comes through and see that we were both transferring it the same way. Like a split comes through, sometimes the property ownership would get split, the original owner of the parent property would end up owning the split parcel and the new owner would end up owning the parent parcel. That's just an example that we'd see on and off a couple of times. Um, by having two departments in it, it does take a little bit more time because you have two people reviewing the deeds, but then they can collaborate, and if they see an error on one side or they have questions, they've got somebody to go to, works a lot better, check them out, system. Are all our parcels cleaned up? To our knowledge, they are, um, but I say that and tomorrow somebody will come in and be like, no, wait, I think I own this, they don't, it happens.
Right.
As soon as that happens, we take care of it, we're like, yeah, we missed that, it got done wrong, we'll take care of it. Uh, the other thing that has happened in our department that I'm really proud of and that was actually started by, when Christine took office the year before me, um, we've changed the perception of the appraisers' office. In-county you go to five, six years ago, and this is something that's kind of happened statewide for the most part, to my knowledge, counties I've known about and been associated with, that there's been a change in thought process on the appraisers' department, appraisers across the state, um, I think we are more apt to be open with the public in our values, and, um, all that stuff is going online now, they can look it up, it's just not given to them once a year, and, um, but the whole process and how we handle the public, I think, has changed our perception. People come into the office, they got questions, we try to answer them, um, we, we're just open with the whole, how the whole process of appraisal works, and even how the, they come up with taxes, you know, our appraisal of the property is only one part of their total, how their taxes are calculating. We try to explain to best variability because we have more, I don't wanna say more knowledge, but more on hands work in calculating some of that for taxpayers, I mean, we have been, I've been through school, I know the process, like the mills, how they work, the assessment rate, how it works, so we, as an appraisers' office, we have a better chance of explaining the overall tax process to people. The, I have one more thing I was gonna talk about that has changed in the department, other than the perception, um, I don't remember what it was now.
Our shared file.
Our shared file.
Super handy.
Su- super handy, yeah, there's been some technology, we're starting to share data via shared file, um, you've got permits on there, correct?
Yeah.
And so we are able to.
And addressing.
Permits and addressing, we get those through a file, we just have to click on and we can see it, instead of relying on a piece of paper to come down to us that can get stuck to the bottom of somebody's pile. Um, we made that shift, the deeds office, we still go up and pick up deeds from them, paper deeds from them, but, um, I would like to see that go to being emailed to us, just for tracking, and, you know, it just comes in that shared file, my lady can go in and she can pull up those deeds. Um, we haven't had any issues with us missing deeds or anything, the trick, deeds office has been doing a real good job of getting them to us, so I haven't really pushed the issue. Um, yeah, that's about it, there's been a lot of.
That's a lot.
There's a lot, there's a lot of work to be done in that office, and, uh, we're getting there slowly, I think I told you guys when I hired on, it's probably a six-year process. We got a pretty good jump on it, um, I was really wanting to get out this year and review CDUs for all the properties, or at least the major cities where our populations are populated, uh, and get them re-looked at, with that data collection position leaving, that's slowing that data process collection down, so getting out and just driving house to house to house to house, and looking at those in a spreadsheet form on the property, probably will get them back a year, cause I want them to have some training and be comfortable in setting those values or those CDU ranks when they go out and do it. And it'll be a collaborated effort, we'll probably, you guys will probably know when it happens, cause you'll probably get a call, hey, I see three appraisers riding around in a car. It's because we're going out and we're all, we'll come up, we'll pull the property up, it's got the address and it's got the ranks, and we'll look at it and all three of us will say, well, I think that's average, or I think that's average plus, I think that's average minus. We collaborate, that way we get an idea when we've got multiple data collectors, we're all looking at the same property in the same ways. So you'll probably get a call, we did in my last county, well, hey, there's three appraisers out riding around the neighborhood, what are they doing, Killen County time? No, that's not what we're doing.
Yep.
So, heads up on that, but like I said, probably won't get that call for maybe another year now. But as we go through review properties, we are checking those. Somebody comes in with a question during an appeal or just comes in with a question, we'll look at that property via the picture and kind of ask them, what do you think, what's the condition and desirability of your property, is that about right? So we discuss that in appeals. Appeals were down this year from last year, and, um, oh, I know what the other thing I was gonna talk about, biggest change in the department is probably values, um, and that's just reflective of the market, so the market's been the biggest change here in the last year to two years, and that's just not this county, that's statewide. I've heard ten to twenty percent average increase per year for the last two years in some counties, so, I think some of our property owners will say, well, mine's a lot, was a lot higher than that, and my answer to that is, well, you probably got lucky the couple of years before, cause your values were probably lower than they should have been. Um, but we're trying to stabilize that, hopefully in the next year, that market will kind of stabilize and we can stabilize our values, cause we did that, they did that work the year before I got here, of making some of those big changes to the properties where they were needed. Now hopefully we'll see more of a stabilized, steady growth in property values.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
I had, actually. So administering the NRP program, which I have as a big work.
I'm not administrating, be careful with that word.
You're right.
Um, yeah, that, that's a loose term there. Um, I probably do have a bigger hand in the NRP program than I would like, um, I'm, she receives some of them, I've received some applications, and I'm processing the ones I see, scanning them, getting them into the shared drive. Um, I'm, she received some of them, I've received some applications and I'm processing the ones I see, scanning them, getting them into the shared drive again. Um, and that's mainly fallen on me, which is okay, cause I have some time to handle it. It's going to be tough going forward, especially with chat on data collection. Um, what I would like to see, now that you opened that door up, what I'd like to see is that NRP is a rebate of taxes. I think the appraiser should be limited to establish a value. I don't want that, our office to be seen as giving anybody's money back. Yeah, we're not writing a check, but if we're doing any, anything more than just putting a value starting out and a completion, then there's that perception that we have a hand in how much money's going back to them. When the programs were initiated, I'd noticed there's a city program, who was that through?
Osage City.
Osage City. Um, and that form actually has the appraiser signing off and granting that NRP. I think that should be with either the board, county commissioners or the city board of Osage City. They should be the ones approving that, not, I'm okay signing off that, yes, these are the values I set, but to say yes or no, they qualify the program, I think we want to be careful of that. So we're going to have a meeting to talk with Osage City about that. Maybe redo that form so it's not so much on the appraiser of signing that, yes, you do qualify or no, you do not. I think there needs to be somebody else that says, okay, here's my values, they do the math and say, yes, you've met that. 10,000, 15,000 or percentage wise depending on program. I think that should be on somebody else. Just for perception purposes. I wasn't going to talk very long, guys.
It hasn't been that long.
Okay. You've had a long day, haven't you? It felt like a long time.
All right.
Any questions for me?
I don't have any.
Okay, we'll continue to work it, getting stuff straight and, uh, we're not there yet, but we've made pretty good strides so far, so. All right?
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Ryan. I feel like yours will be short, you just gave us enough date.
Yeah.
You just had to answer Jay's question.
Yeah, man. Um, like I said, uh, earlier, when you give us the, some others said he's going to figure out all the recycling for the cardboard online again. Um, probably I'll make that, uh, move towards that here pretty quick. Um, we have our bridges that we discussed earlier. We have, um, they did push the one back that we're supposed to let in July to September. So they had, uh, the state had, let's play some of the forms on the deeds, uh, when we did the transfer on the land. So they thought they were missing some of them, but they just didn't have them in the right place. So that puts that bid back a little bit, but that, that won't hurt us too bad. So we got everything ready to go on it and the phone, uh, the KCPL's put their line, so. That'll go up very quickly once they get it going, so. I don't think they'll be able to start that one in the fall just because of the size of that one. Um, that's totally different from a herd like this street, like we talked earlier. That's the one behind the Montana Dam, goes over 110 mile. Don't think they want to tackle that one going into the winter, which I hope not. That'll probably be the next early spring project instead of getting it on this year's, so.
How long have you been here now?
Uh, it's sort of 20 months, wasn't it?
I think it's been close to two years.
Yeah, it'll be two years this December.
So anyway, I mean, we hear from you every week, so it's not like you're tired or anything. Any updates or stuff that we need to start looking for now and looking to or? We was talking about dump trucks.
Yeah, yeah, uh, we'll probably start moving towards that again. Um, reach back out and see if anybody's found anything, so we can get some bids. Um, we talked a little bit about when Scott was here on the motor grader situation. We got one that's at 10,000 some hours, but we got another one that was stored around that salt facility. So, um, doesn't have near the hours that the other one do, but, uh, something that we gotta kind of watch out for because now you're getting into that time when you're from that 10,000 to that 14,000 hour machine. Something major breaks and you're looking at at least 40 to 50,000 dollars depending on like if it's transmission inside of it and stuff. Not to mention that's out of house fix. Um, we don't have the equipment to, um, do all that ourselves. So, um, something we want to be real careful with. Let's see, I think that one that's sitting at 8,400, that's the one with the rest on it. It just had some cooling issues and other fan issues. And by the time we got done fixing that and a couple of little def sensors and stuff, we were at $22,000 on repairs on that one. That's a brick. Um, the, let's see, I think it's the 26th. Um, at nine o'clock is what I told them, we're going to have some paving bids for areas where we need to pave this year. Um, so I've reached out to several contractors last week.
So the bids will be open that day?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Did you get that, Melinda? The 26th, so next Monday?
Yeah.
At 9:00 AM?
Mm-hmm, 9:00 AM, we'll open, uh, paving bids. Reached out to three different areas, so. Um, they were looking at, one of the contractors was looking at them last week. I got a call earlier from another contractor, so they might have a couple of questions on them. So ahead of that, we'll fix that on 125th Street, but.
Good.
So ahead of the paving group, we will have that-
Right.
-prepared. It might just be, um, AB3 covered up over it until they can pave over it. At least we can have that on there. Before I dug it up, I didn't want to be too far out from our baby.
Right. Like since- Also on that day, so we had the public hearing for that rock court, so it's much nicer to hear it.
Yeah.
I think it's about 9:00 there.
10:00 AM.
10:00, 10:00 AM, okay. All right, that's all I have.
All right, well, thank you.
Yep.
Excuse me, Les, could I correct on Ryan for just a minute?
No.
Just one second. There's a lot of amazing things that he's doing, but one of the first things that he did when he came in was to do the LR SP study with the Kansas Department of Transportation, which is going to position us to go after a major grant for the county. So it's not in the end yet, but because of the work that he did, we will be able to qualify it. So thank you, Ryan.
Very good, thank you. Jeff? Do you like to give us enough date?
Sure.
He only wanted a room, I believe.
Oh, we got Tom. Well, no, they can have, nothing, love you.
He's got looked at, he's like, he didn't know where you're at for a second there.
Uh, we're trying to get the third floor put back together. Um, the flooring was completed up there last week, so we're trying to get everybody moved back in. Um, we get all the desk furniture, everything, uh, computers hooked up. Um, still working on the Department of Labor inspection, trying to get all of those corrections resolved. Kind of keep up with Mo and and just the day-to-day, everything pops up. Which is always something.
Right. It's life of maintenance.
Always.
Yep.
About there? About a year and a half.
Anybody need to need or?
I'd like to look at the third body.
Mm-hmm.
In third person.
Cause you guys don't just take care of the courthouse, right?
No, there are seven, seven facilities, seven buildings.
Total.
Total, yeah. I wish. Just the courthouse.
How many are there?
Seven.
What's wrong?
Health department, noxious weed, Roden Bridge, extension office, health department.
You do all of it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I thought Roden Bridge did maintenance repairs, but-
Well, they, I mean, they, they still have other things.
So you're right.
I'm talking about the office, not necessarily the shop so much, but.
Okay.
Yeah, they do most of their stuff down there, but like, there was a couple of things identified in the, in the inspection.
Right.
So, and Ryan and I've discussed about it and get those resolved.
Very good.
And hopefully we will get that, I think we're scheduled to get that on August 18th, the report back. I would like to have everything corrected by August 18th. August 18th is when the 60-day period to get everything fixed starts. So I would like to have everything fixed before we even get that notification.
Do you have to come back and post it?
No, you just get it back and tell me and then you write down all your corrective actions that you've taken. So I'd like to have that done by August 18th so that we can then just send that packet right back. And your soundboards will be here tomorrow.
Sweet, cool. Decided how you're going to hang them yet? I mean, they're-
See when they get here.
Yeah.
They're not very happy. Where that railing is, they're two foot by four foot.
Yeah.
And this, I got, we were 10, 10 or 12? 10 or 12, so we'll have them kind of, maybe some on the ceiling.
Yeah, I've put a couple up there for sure. It may be in this direction specifically.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, should be here tomorrow.
Very good. Cool. Hey, thank you. Heather?
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Man, I haven't seen you for a while, stranger in the room.
Well, you guys might know that District Court is closed today, so today we're having a workday in my office. I guess I'll call it a PBK workday. Um, so that transition has happened and we've had it for three weeks now, I believe. Um, one week was training. Um, we had a PBK representative here for four days, Monday through Thursday. She was here pretty much all day, um, teaching us how to use the system, input things, um, create our own forms. Um, I think I mentioned before, they only set up so many of our forms in the system. Um, after the first 100, they bill us $25 a form, which is a lot with the number of forms we have. Um, so the girls are spending quite a bit of time putting our forms into PBK so that they will pull over and merge the necessary information for any case and work seamlessly with the system. The transition to PBK hasn't been as smooth, quite as smooth as I hoped it would be. Um, it, you know, they, everybody uses different types of software and then you try to pull all the information into a new type of software and it misses things. And so we've also realized that a lot of our information that was in full case did not transition and pull over. So that there's been, um, some extra hours put in it, just literally going into our old files, finding what didn't pull and pulling it over manually. That is time consuming, um, and that's been just a lot of time. Um, so, but otherwise PBK is up and going, we're using it on the daily. Um, every time, we're not throwing away any paper files yet, just in case we need to go find something in paper. Um, but really as I've been going through court, I've been kind of marking on the paper folder, everything's in PBK, this is good to go, you can shred this, we've, we've got it from here. So, um, I am so anxious to get those shelves of paper out of the office, it'll be really nice. Um, in that effort as well, we've been closing files that we could. So just because we're transitioning to PBK doesn't mean we want all the files that we closed in May, right before PBK came. Um, transitioning over and having to worry about every single piece of paper being scanned in, that's just excess work that we don't need to take that time for. So everything that was closed before the PBK, um, date went live, we are still closing the old fashioned way in boxes and getting them over across the hallway in our storage area. Um, and eventually as the years go by, those will go away, um, but it saves those extra hours for now. Um, but I really like the software, I think it's going to be really good, it's going to be more time efficient, um, things like that. So that will be helpful once it's fully integrated. As far as other things in the office, um, there has been efforts to launch what is called the RAFT program, R-A-F-T. It is a specific diversion program garnered toward, um, possession of illegal drugs. Um, and we're not really talking about just possession of THC or marijuana, we're talking about possession of hard drugs, marijuana, cocaine, heroin, things like that. The RAFT diversion, um, people may not be familiar with the Kansas sentencing guidelines. Um, but in the state of Kansas right now, somebody who is convicted of a simple possession, um, of a controlled substance, again, not marijuana, but the harder drugs, um, the catch 22 is that that's a felon, that's a felony. So a first-time conviction for somebody who has never been in trouble before, they're now a felon, they can't get a job. Their ability to be successful in our community, um, goes way down. Most of them can't, they have difficulties getting housing, difficulties getting a job, and they actually become potentially a bigger drain on society than they may have been beforehand. So the, what the RAFT diversion does is it, the state of Kansas has allowed people in that diversion program to also access the same state-funded, um, treatment program as if you got a conviction. It's called SB 123 treatment. So essentially someone on the diversion program can have the same 18-month term of treatment through the state of Kansas that someone with a conviction gets. But the, if they complete that program successfully, at the end of that case, if they're successful in all the terms and being compliant, not picking up any new cases, um, or, or things like that, then they can potentially, um, earn that case being dismissed, um, rather than a conviction, which allows them to keep their housing opportunities, hopefully keep a job, things like that. So, um, that is something, I know everybody in the community, I think, is very concerned about the drug issues here in Osage. Um, I'm sure that there will be some people out there that don't like the idea of not having convictions, but the reality is we need these people to get treatment, we need these people to be successful, we need them to be able to have housing, we need them to be able to have jobs, um, if they're going to stay in our community. So we are looking into that, um, and hopefully we'll have it going before the end of the year. Um, so that's one thing we're working on. We are going to continue working on, um, ramping up our involvement in child in need of care, truancy, um, cases, juvenile cases in the community. Um, it's a long process. Um, I think anybody who has needed supports in our community understands that we have a real lack of community-based services in the county. Um, so a lot of this is me spending a lot of time talking to people outside the county, talking to, um, DCF and trying to get them to pull surrounding counties' resources into our county. We've had some success with that there, I'll, I'll just give an example. Um, DCF has a service called multi-systemic therapy. Um, it is a family-oriented therapy that deals with, um, sometimes it's juvenile offenders. Um, sometime, most of the time, um, I've seen it used with C case, child need care cases, where we might be dealing with parents that have drug or alcohol issues, we might be, or we might be dealing with parents who, um, maybe just need basic parenting skills, hygiene in the home, different things like that. Um, and we've been able to get referrals from Shawnee County to come down here in a couple of cases and we've been able to keep children at home instead of removing, which is, which is a real goal. So it's, there's important services that our county, um, we really need to branch out and get some of those services coming here. Um, Crosswinds is here, they just can't reach everybody, there, there's no way, they don't have enough presence here. Um, I think, I, I haven't talked to Crosswinds directly, but I've been hearing that a lot of what they do is at the school age. Um, you know, they're there for our students in the schools and I think that they meet a lot of those needs in the schools. Um, but for people out here in the community, um, the school presence really kind of draws the majority of their, their people and their hours that they have here. So anything we can do to encourage growth of those providers in the county are also going to support our families, reduce the level of cases that we get, the number of cases hopefully, um, and if not reduce the number of cases and hopefully reduce the number of children that end up being removed from the home. Cause I don't know if you've ever been involved in those types of cases, but it's, it's very traumatic for the kids, even in bad situations. Um, we are, let's see, also just working on, um, handling the number of cases that we have. Um, I, we, I think it's been a broken record, we have an increase in the number of- I, we, I think it's been a broken record. We have an increase in the number of cases, the increase in the number of serious cases. And that all creates an increase in the volume of work that we do in the office. We have preliminary hearings set regularly throughout the month. We do several of those. We're talking about talking to witnesses, talking to victims, preparing those cases, and then having those cases heard before a judge. All of that takes time. But we've been working on that and my goal since I have been in office is to really create, I guess, more access, trying to talk to individuals, victims. It's impossible for me to talk to every victim on every case, but especially those person crimes that are higher level felonies. I try to make sure and talk to people and let them know expectations for the case, their involvement, what they may face if it goes to trial, those sorts of things. And I've had a good response from that. I think it's especially important on cases that are, have sexual allegations and things of that nature. So I've been pretty pleased with that. I think it's, I have received feedback that everybody really appreciates that that communication that we've not necessarily had before in the county. So I think that's good. I don't think I have anything else off the top of my head unless you guys have specific questions.
Chris, I would like to say something. I, just from Sheriff's Office' point of view, we'd like to thank you for working with us so diligently. An example, she came out Saturday night, a bunch of us asked for her cases, that's impressive to me. We do appreciate what you're doing. And also a bunch of conversion. I know there's five residents in this county that are repeat customers of ours.
We understand.
Individual, thanks. We're all set up, doctor, house, game, tree, but they're, I'm super proud of them. That's five people that are not selling, not really in the area, so, right.
And that's one thing I will say too, is I really do try to cooperate with all the departments. I, I mean, I think of course I have more contact with the Sheriff's Department than the local departments just because of the volume of cases that come through the Sheriff's Office. But I think it's really important that we know and are able to identify through our conversations and our keeping in touch. I guess there has to be some sort of organized structure and, and learning and knowing who's in your community and what type of impact that individual person is having on your community. There is no way for me to read every case that comes through the office and know, hey, this is a one-off. This is not like this person. This is, they have no criminal history. And then we have other people who have been repeat habitual offenders and the efforts that we've made maybe to avoid recidivism haven't worked and we need to take a different approach. I've been in communication with the Sheriff's Office multiple times over, hey, I've got this defendant. This is the plea that they want. Where do we stand? What's been their past history, things like that. And it is my goal to be, to be hard on drugs, to take a stern, a stern drug stance. And the way I put it to Sheriff is, I want, I want it to get out and I want it to be known that you don't wanna do drugs or bring drugs into Osage County. I want people going around I thirty-five even to get around us because everybody knows you don't wanna come to Osage County because you're gonna get hung up. That being said, we also have a lot of people who live here in our community. You know, Judge Wine says it in just about every felony sentencing. I'm not any better than meth. I just never tried it. Meth has like a ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent first time, one time addiction rate. And these people.
When you're talking about the RAFT program, is that for meth? Is that for hard drugs?
Yes, yeah, meth would be included in that. And that's really, there's a balance. I wanna be hard on crime when it's necessary and it is in a lot of places, a lot of times. But you know, there are people that just go one time, nineteen years old, they go to a party, peer pressure, one time they use it. And the next thing you know, you got a twenty-three-year-old whose kids are taken away. Because they never got picked up on a criminal case. And now we have their kids in the system and we gotta find a way to, to work with that family. So things like the RAFT program, things like these services I'm talking about, getting in for our families for these child needed care cases, it's all related. The more supports we have, the more ways that we can lift them up and keep them from this and help them get better, the less of a drain they are gonna be on the county's economy. The other part of that too, is that you can't, we have to get into the schools. And I've been talking to Sheriff about this too. And like City of Carbondale, we, we helped through the diversion fund last year, funding the DARE program. I don't know if you all remember the year from when you were kids, but I did. I mean, I think I told Les one time, you know, when I was a kid, it was that, here's your brain, here's your brain on drugs, cracked egg commercial. You know, like, that's so burned in my brain. I don't see those kinds of commercials anymore for my kids. You know, they don't get that at school. And so that's on our agenda and list of things to try and, and produce in the next. I, I'd love to have it ready for the school year. I don't know that we will, but as soon as we can, we wanna get in there, be vocal with our students, let them know consequences. But at the same time, also let them know they can come to us too. Because the way we keep that nineteen-year-old from using meth at the party is to start talking with them. And honestly, it needs to start at like fifth, sixth grade because they're getting, it's just so bad.
How long have they been in county town, you tell me?
Since January third.
So.
Six months, just shy.
So, I, I do, on that RAFT program, is that, that's not the guy out here. That's somebody with possession. That's not the guy out there selling.
No, no, it is not. So I will tell you, Senate Bill one twenty-three is what provides funding to the state-sponsored drug treatment program. The only people who are available for that program, even with convictions, are, are simple possession and users. If you graduate to the distribution class of drugs, you are not eligible for that. The state's not gonna spend their money on distributors. But when we're talking about the simple possession, and the RAFT program is really designed to get those people who don't have a criminal history, there are some avenues. I'm still exploring it to make sure I understand the criteria to be eligible for that funding. But there might be some room for getting somebody who's had one prior conviction, but the RAFT wasn't available the first time. But the idea is that we try to avoid a felony conviction so those people can still be productive members of society, so.
Especially a nineteen-year-old, if you had made a mistake, right?
Right, yeah. I mean, we see, I see a lot of cases that are twenties, I mean, young.
How much is vaping correlated to that problems in our community, for us?
So, I have definitely.
Oh, vaping is more towards do you see, more marijuana kind of stuff? We've seen, obviously, an increase in that.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of it. I mean, we're seeing definitely an increase. I know like in Linden, we got some new shops in town and everything. We've definitely had issues. They are getting confiscated at the schools all the time. For those of you that don't realize, even if you're just using a nicotine vape, those nicotine vapes have five times the amount of nicotine you're getting from a puff off of a cigarette. So again, when you're talking about the addiction rate, these kids are getting addicted to nicotine way faster. And it's also been linked, I mean, there's so many studies out there about the level of nicotine and chemicals in these vapes inducing a lot of anxiety and depression along with the addiction. So, I mean, there's, I think there's a commercial somewhere, I, I don't remember where we saw it, but it talks about, they might as well be called anxiety sticks. Because, I mean, they have, we have kids that are literally sticking their vapes in their pocket. Girls are sticking them in their bras and then bringing them up in class and taking a puff, right there in class.
And they're so little, like.
They are so, they are so little. And not only that, but in our schools, you're not gonna have an SRO officer reaching into a child's bra to obtain, to obtain a vape. So, I mean, you can't, you're not gonna get them even because they can hide them because they're so small. We've also had, you know, older kids supplying to younger kids, adults supplying. It's the same thing that we've all known has happened with cigarettes for years. But it's just a very, it's a very different animal. It is not as simple as smoking. It is not as safe. As weird as that sounds to say, cigarettes might be the safer alternative to something. I think vapes are more dangerous. And then you get into the THC vapes. And you know, we all learned when we were in school doing the DARE program, marijuana is a gateway drug. It isn't always for everybody, but it, it definitely can service that. So it's very concerning. And again, that's part of the school education piece. Another big issue for the schools is the texting inappropriate photos. I get cases on my desk all the time. And we're talking kids as young as twelve and thirteen that are texting completely inappropriate pictures. And these are, if filed on and if necessary, and that's what needs to happen, these are felony cases that require registration for juveniles. And so that's another really important topic we need to get in the schools for, talk to them. It doesn't just put them at risk, it puts, for images being shared, but it puts them at risk for human trafficking. There's a lot of concerns that we'd really like to address in the next year or two. It's just a matter of getting all those things put into place, finding the right educational materials and, and being present in the schools. So, and the SROs have been great and are willing to do anything and put on any type of educational assembly. We just need to get the information together, so.
Very good. Thanks. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
I think Colleen is the one left.
Are you gonna skip this season since we didn't accept her?
Yeah. She's not getting any, nothing. Nope, no mo. I feel like you gave us enough.
Yes.
We'll take a brief. Everybody use the restroom. Everybody use the restroom. This has got a little pricier than. You all right? Had a pretty impactful meeting yourself. That's what you gotta do, just smile and keep saying that. You're getting it, ain't ya? If you have an update you would like to provide, you're more than welcome to, but.
I haven't been lately, just say that.
I already know.
Michelle said that wasn't the current minutes. She said that she has a copy of the current, it's about the little ones. We're in recess, Debbie.
I can do mine one, or less.
You can take that. He just get back to it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Now I'm ready to go for another four hours. Go look at her, you know, that one.
It'll be short. There's lots being done. Short, short what we can talk about.
Josh is not asleep.
Okay, we are back in session.
Are we able to proceed?
I'm pretty sure it's the second one, but I always read it just in the case it's changed. Never know, somebody slip up. All right, welcome back.
Started?
Exactly.
Take where you can get them. Okay, floor chairs.
All right, good afternoon. I wanted to answer, begin to address Jay's questions. You know, I've only been on board for ninety days. So we have been doing a lot of things. Just a reminder, I detailed those out in our budget discussion, what the first ninety days looks like. One of my, what I believe, one of my most important goals is to build a bridge to the community. And I've been trying to do that every day. And one of the things I wanted to share with the entire team is that we are planning an Osage County Economic Development Vision Summit for which all department heads will be included. And the title of the Vision Summit is Reimagine: Osage County's Prosperity, Unleasing the Potential for a Thriving Community. And all of these, we have combed all of the information we can to try to make sure that we have a good cross-section of the county represented in the meeting. Everyone's voice matters. This is where we're going to invite the Department of Congress. We'll be there, Paul Hughes, Jeremy Hill of Wichita State Economic Development Team will be there. And Jeremy Wagner will be there, who's with Gas Services. And basically, the bottom line is, we're gonna try to capture where Osage County has been to date, what the future economic trends are, and what we as a county want to align on for the future. And that moves me into the second point, which is the most important thing, is to try to grow the tax base in Osage County. So we will align in that meeting as an entire body and then that will, that will become our strategic plan. It will also inform that recompete application that we have, we know is gonna be coming up probably in July or August. And so I'm really gonna be working hard to network and make sure we have all the people, as many people as we possibly can in that meeting. The areas of growth that so far have been at the top of mind is really growth in business development, housing, and childcare. I know that might be a new topic to you folks, but I've been working with Osage City on trying to see what we can do to meet some of the childcare needs in the county. And I'll have more detail for you folks. We're just beginning that effort. I also wanted to share that we've been working with some of our communities on writing grants. Melvorn, as we worked with them, with Jay, on the community center. And Lisa Litch and her team have done an amazing job pulling all the. And then tomorrow night, they are having a community update on kind of all the important things for development that they wanna go after. There are seven things. Thank you so much.
They did a survey, didn't they?
They did. They did a community survey. I'm really proud of them. I'm really proud of them. So we'll receive more results tomorrow evening and then really start trying to develop plans to go after that. The other thing I wanted to share is, I think I mentioned the ninety day, if you wanna get into all the details. There are several growth initiatives that we're working on in economic development that we can't share yet. that we can't share yet, but I assure you are very time-consuming, but will really help this county in the long run. And as soon as we can share more, we definitely will. I also wanted to take a moment to say thank you to you folks for supporting me and, and I'm just listening to the community and we're trying to do their will. I also wanted to thank all of my partners. Matt, Ryan, Missy, all of you folks, Christine, every single department head has supported our initiatives in our clerk's office and in something that we need. Sometimes exploring these opportunities requires work upfront. And I know that I've been burning some of our departments. So I just want to say there's probably more coming, but thank you very, very much. I appreciate it. It will pan out. And I think that's all I have to share today. Good question. June 29th, 8:30 in the morning to 12:30. It'll be an interactive session. It's a Thursday, yep. And it will be at Willow's Bend, the beautiful, beautiful venue of Jim Shively. And I am hoping with this list, this last little bit, we'll be able to get the majority of the invites out today.
Will that be filmed or taped, so people won't watch it at a later date?
I am going to try, yeah. I, I think that would be really good because we're even going to want to recall some of the information.
So is it by invitation or does it show up?
It's by invitation, only because we're trying to, there's a set amount of space. I would love to invite the entire community, but we have tried very hard to make sure there's a one representative from every, every entity. So I think that's all I have for today.
I would just like to thank you. Did you hit the ground running?
Oh, thank you.
And the amount of topics that she's been dealing with and the way she can organize it blows my mind. I'm a very organized person. I, no way, I, I don't know how she is keeping it all separated and prioritized and.
I have lots of good people around.
And I do know you said that you have a lot of people calling you that you.
Oh, yeah.
That was a little bit of a concern, that you want to, you know, respond to all of those.
Yeah, thank you for.
That may be something we need to problem solve fairly quickly.
Yeah, just to say for the larger group, unlike you guys, I'm receiving on Friday, I missed 67 messages, 67. And I responded to all the other ones. So I am trying feverishly to get back to everyone, and I hope I haven't missed anyone. But if I have, it's just an oversight. Call me back. I will definitely get to you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Yeah, I told her I was serious. I'm not kidding. She, we talked. She said she didn't have a whole lot. Go ahead. I think that's it, right? You know, I was just looking it over right now. Okay. Did you have anything other than that? POs, that other?
I have this and then one more copy of the C O N.
Yes. So if you want to pass in, first, first down, please. Yep, this is the PCs, the displays. This was a bid from Sunny. Do you want to review that? Look at that. Yes, ma'am.
May we be excused?
Certainly. Certainly. Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't realize you guys were waiting on me to excuse you.
Thank you.
I know Jeff wasn't waiting. He decided to sit down a little longer. Yeah, we've already talked about it. I just told her to get the PO put together.
This was actually like talked about previously and approved or something.
Yeah, it's been approved. It just never got, I just want you guys to see it and review it. I'll just make the motion to approve the order of purchase number 3811 in the amount of $6,569.08 for the county clerk's department to be paid from the clerk tech fund. Most has been made and seconded all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now, I will move to go, let's go ahead and handle Chris. What do you think? Move to go into executive session with Chris Wells under non-elected personnel exception for a matter of 15 minutes with Sheriff Wells and all three commissioners. Most have been made and seconded all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Power poles taken down in Scranton.
Yeah, computers, five computers.
Thank you.
Great.
One minute.
I'm sorry.
Do you give your time?
Mm-hmm. About four minutes.
This is actually how it's done. And we thought it was very good.
Did you give your time?
Mm-hmm. About four minutes.
Yep, have a good day.
Thank you.
Four minutes, you say?
Yeah.
Um, did Michelle happen to send you the other minutes?
I gave them to you.
No, she said there was a different copy.
Oh, no, that's the only one that was out there.
Okay.
And then I made copies of the please for you.
Oh, very good.
Proceed with it. Sorry, because then Matt will go to you guys also.
Is it one o'clock? I asked Josh if he was available for a call. He says not one to two. It's one o'clock.
No action taken from him.
No action taken, correct. Are we clear? I will move to go into an executive session with all three commissioners, under attorney-client, for ten minutes.
Yes, except Josh just said he's not available for one to.
Well, but we could still talk about it.
I mean, I can probably be texting him. He may not be able to take the call.
Right. Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Ten minutes.
Ten minutes.
Did you give your time, most time?
Yeah.
One minute.
He's the one that said they just...
They started it?
Yeah, they just designated a person for it.
Okay, so, um, if there's nothing further, I need to cut all this short, but I have to go.
I'll make a motion adjourned.
Hmm, motion to adjourn, or second? Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you guys very much, wish you luck. I'm gonna be there till midnight.
You're on before we...
I pulled down three transformers now.
I don't know if I'm sending this to the right number, but it's going the other way too. We'll check when you get it outside by house.
She said text or email.